Okay. We're gonna call open session to order at six oh four P M. Roll call. Megan? Here. Jim?
Here.
Tina?
Here.
I'm here. Soyan?
Here.
And Tess, our student board member? And Dr. Davis is here.
Here.
Great. Let's stand and do the flags. Right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, report out of closed session actions taken. Um, we had a special meeting on March four, March fourteen, two thousand twenty-three. No action was taken at close. And um, tonight, no uh, action was taken. Need a motion to adopt uh, the agenda? Test? Right? Motion? So moved?
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor? Hi. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion through. Onto item four point five, public features on agenda and non-agenda items. If none, it's okay. So go on to item four point six, report from Oak Park Municipal Advisory Council. Jane Nye, here. Jane?
I know, so nice to see you. Thank you for braving the rain. Of course, of course. So I'm Jane Nye. I'm the chair of the municipal, Oak Park Municipal Advisory Council. And we have a new MAC. We have two new members um, that were elected in November. Michelle Santucci and Brian Truschinsky are the new members. And then J L Diaz was um, a returning member. He was on the election, too. So we meet the last Thursday of each month. And Jim is um, our rep from the school district. And I appreciate him coming every time. Thank you. So we started out with public safety reports. And for the first time, we had the Ventura County Fire Department Division Chief East County Jeff Shay attend. So we've never had the fire department come before. Um, he plans to include the engine company thirty-six, which is across the street. But they were out on a call. So he came instead. Um, he mentioned that our fire station is staffed every day with firefighters and paramedics. And that A M R, or American Medical Response, is the private ambulance company that provides transportation and emergency response for Oak Park. He said every nine one one call goes to the fire department dispatch center. And everything is G P S coordinated and residents will get the fastest response time possible. The closest ambulance, the closest fire truck, and the closest paramedic when nine one one is called. So it's nice to have them show up and do a report. Then we had the Ventura County Sheriff. We had Senior Deputy Christopher Jones. He mentioned that catalytic converter thefts have gone back up. And that if residents hear sawing noises, to call nine one one immediately. Um, he said community involvement is essential and that transnational criminal organizations may be involved. He also said that residential break-ins have increased and this usually happens around dinnertime. He recommended that we be sure to have cameras and alarms on our homes and our cars. And he came in with a new recommendation, which is a license plate reader. He said the city of Thousand Oaks is using a Flock Safety System, which helps the sheriff ID suspects and reduce crime. Reading car license plates. So he came with a recommendation to Supervisor Gorrell, our new supervisor. And he also brought it to the Oak Park MAC. He said we would need a total of three cameras. It'd be about thirty-five hundred dollars a year for the cameras and a three hundred and fifty dollar install fee. So he said the Flock Safety Company does all the maintenance and keeps all the records. And it's solar powered, so no infrastructure is needed. He said the next step would be for um, Flock Safety to um, be added to our budget. The, the system. The budget was already submitted to Ventura County. So we're looking at whether we can add that into the budget at a late date. Um, also, probably this month, we're having our next meeting at the end of the month. That he'll have a representative from Flock Safety to attend a MAC meeting. So we're hoping they show up this month. Then we had the C H P Officer Ryan Ayers. He also highly recommended the Flock Safety license plate readers. He said it helps all aspects of law enforcement, um, residential burglaries, retail theft, and auto theft. So um, he also mentioned, the C H P mentioned the good news for Oak Park, no crashes locally. He did say that there was one road rage. So this was from February, but he said there was one road rage incident on Deer Hill. But he said statewide since COVID, road rage incidents are the worst. And has had a strong upward trend for incidents in California. So he said, don't react if somebody has a road rage incident, don't put yourself in harm's way. And he also mentioned that we recently had two wrong way drivers in Ventura County. One was a fatality. Um, he also mentioned that Moore Park C H P, so Roy Officer Ayers is out of the Moore Park office. They just received four new cadets out of the academy. And we may see C H P officers paired up during the day. They're usually paired up at night, but he said now with the new cadets, they'll be paired up during the day. He said he is still working traffic complaints in Oak Park, especially speeding around the schools. Complaints around Red Oak Elementary School regarding drivers going through the stop sign without stopping and overall congestion. Um, he said, this is his point of view, that he feels that parents are not willing to protect their children at drop off locations. He mentioned Madea Creek. He said they drop them off on the wrong side of the road, let them run across the road. He's very concerned about that. He said the C H P continues to work with school principals and monitor the situation. But um, he said as soon as they're not right there on the street, the incidents go right back up. Um, let's see. Um, Supervisor Gorrell, who's our new supervisor replacing Linda Parks, is holding sidewalk office hours monthly. Um, he had one in Thousand Oaks Library last month. And then um, this month, on March thirtieth, Thursday, March thirtieth, he'll be at the Oak Park Library from twelve to two P M. And he's asking for residents to come by and talk about what their issues are. And he also wants input on his website. They're redoing their website. So he said any kind of inputs he would gratefully accept. And I wanted to mention, I live near Oak Hills Elementary School. The traffic pylons continue to get knocked down. I've been, because I live there and I see it every day, I submit the fixed repair request to the county. And they're pretty good about repairing it, but um, there's a couple more that have been knocked down. I submitted it and they said they're on order. The pylons are in order as soon as they come in, they'll fix them. Um, also, I wanted to mention that the trash cans on Canaan were not emptied for over two weeks, almost three weeks. And I had follow up with um, waste management and the county. Everybody pointed to the other saying who owned it. But um, finally, and including the trash cans in front of the high school, I noticed were overflowing. And then we had winds and rain and everything got on the sidewalks. So um, they did take care of it, but in case it happens again, I'll follow up. I'm watching it. Um, they're supposed to empty the trash cans on Tuesday. Weekly. Um, I also wanted to mention this, the last thing, that the Oak Park Fire Department um, submitted a conditional use permit to, for fire station thirty-six across the street for a new eighty foot tall lattice tower to replace the existing thirty-six foot tower. And um, it's actually not an Oak Park MAC ownership, but we approved the conditional use permit. And it goes to Ventura County Planning for approval. That's it for me. And just another reminder that the next MAC meeting is the same day that Supervisor Gorrell has his sidewalk talk. Um, it's next Thursday, March thirtieth, right here in G nine at seven P M. That's it for me. Any questions or comments?
No, just thank you so much, Jane. We're really lucky to have you.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I can comment, having been to that meeting, that she nailed every single thing that happened at that meeting.
I have no doubt.
Except that if you do not know it, this woman is a single-handed defender of all matters related to graffiti in this community.
It's true, it's true. But we haven't had any new graffiti, so I'm really happy.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I know you're watching. Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item four point seven, remarks from board members. Soyan, if you wanna start?
Um, so, last week, um, Board Member Denise and Megan and I participated in the C S B A Legislative Action Week. Um, it is a week where uh, through our school board, California School Boards Association, um, they basically organize um, times for school districts to meet with their state representatives in the um, um, in the legislature, in the House, in the Senate. And um, to talk about sort of um, key issues that are important to all the districts. And so we met with staff members from, from Assembly Woman Jackie Irwin's office and State Senator Henry Stern to advocate on behalf of all California school districts. Um, funding, um, not surprisingly, was, was top of the agenda to fully fund the L C F F COLA without any cuts to the discretionary arts and instructional um, instructional materials block grant. And to remain focused on ensuring full and successful implementation of existing new programs such as Universal TK, Universal School Meals, and Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. Instead of creating new categorical programs, especially during this time where school districts are still fragile coming out of the pandemic. Already stretched thin, as we all know, trying to implement these large new programs on top of even the new bell schedule. So, um, so I think um, those are, are, the staff members heard us loud and clear, were very sympathetic. There were um, a few other um, bills also that uh, we advocated for, but I think those were really the most relevant for our district. Um, and I just think it's important for us to continue to advocate with our local legislators, not only during this action week, but it's an important opportunity for us to uh, start relationships um, or strengthen relationships with their staffers. Um, I also attended uh, Future Panther Night, which was awesome. I mean, it was um, uh, we had a full house. Uh, and I, I just want to say that everyone got up there and just had such great entertaining and informative presentations. I like the format this year. I think this year it was just everything happened um, in the multipurpose room or in the gym without the breakouts. But um, I really felt like everyone that got to hear from all the different teachers. And um, so it was a fantastic night. And I also, I, I think it's, Rag and you, you probably get the credit for this for um, working with uh, you know, staff to send out invitations to our DOC applicants to attend. I thought that was a great idea. So hopefully there were a lot in attendance that evening and saw some, saw how wonderful our middle school um, is. Uh, I also had the opportunity to attend um, an assembly where a new motivational speaker, Keith Hawkins, came. Um, you know, Dr. Davis was there too, and that was fantastic. And just, I hope that we continue to do that. And that was, I think, funded by our P F A. So I wanted to thank the P F A for continuing to um, to, to fund such important um, activities around, you know, social emotional health and, and um, and wellness. Uh, also got to attend the Oak Park High, our first, I think, mock college admissions night. Um, I only got to get uh, attend the tail end because it, it was on the same night as uh, Future Panther Night. But what a turnout. Um, so many colleges represented, we got to speak with, and Ms. Wang and I were there too. We got to speak with a couple of the college representatives that were there. Um, it was just really well done. And I, I just really want to commend um, you know, our, our College and Career Counselor Amanda Fitz, along with Natalie Smith and the rest of the staff for putting that together. It was just really well done. Hope, hope that that is a tradition that continues. Um, uh, we also got to attend the Brookside Office Hours as part of our um, our continued efforts to go around to all those sites. Um, and I just wanted to thank all the teachers and staff who came to the office hours to speak to Denise and I. Um, we really look forward to this time when board members get to hear directly from teachers and staff. And hope, um, hope that we can, uh, not this year, next year, schedule one where we can hear directly from the students. Because I think that was something that we, as a board, had wanted to do as well, is to hear from our students and get their input. Um, and then lastly, I uh, attended the Curriculum Council and Measure S subcommittee meetings.
Thank you, Soyan. Tina?
And I also attended the Oak Park High School Mock Admissions Committee. It was absolutely outstanding. I think it was a really great experience for the families that were there, um, just to see what it's like um, from the side of the admissions um, rep standpoint and how to review um, applications and seeing how tough it is to choose between very qualified candidates. And I just also want to thank the P F A for co-sponsoring that event. Um, and also Amanda Fitz for organizing um, a fantastic event. I also attended Board Office Hours with um, Board Member Helfstein at Oak Park High School. And I also listened in on a webinar that was hosted by the Policy Analysis for California Education on partnerships to improve equity in math course um, taking. So they shared a little bit on, on research on how partnerships between university faculty and high school math specialists um, can lead to, to the development of new and innovative math courses that increase equitable access to advanced math and improves student outcomes. So it was highly informative and I'll be sure to share that link um, with staff to share. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you.
I'll start with the fun part first. I got to go opening, go to opening night of the Addams Family. And I hope that most of you in the audience got to go see it. It was a blast. I'm really impressed by the quality of the musical support in the pit, as well as the singing and dancing and, and otherwise as talents, the acting talents of the staff in the play. It was just tremendous fun to watch. Uh, going into more mundane matters, we had a meeting of the Budget Committee. Let me take you from the high points to the low points right away there. So Tina and I met with um, Adam and uh, we discussed, I mean, Byron. And we spoke about the financial matters that related to the long-term requirements uh, beyond eighteen months of keeping the school properly um, supported and maintained. We had a teleconference with the representative of Piper Sandler, which is our investment banking firm. And that was great that they were able to meet with us at a distance. He was in a hotel room in Philadelphia. And that was very informative. Uh, was also able to go on two of these open office meetings where we were able to gather input from staff uh, and pass it on to management and intercede when there are issues of communication or items to be dealt with. I went with Megan to the Oak View High School, which had, has a fantastic program for uh, our high schoolers. And I was also able to go with Denise to Oak Hills Elementary School. Different age range and a different um, set of requirements. But it was a real pleasure to speak to the teachers and staff at both of these schools. And it was a real treat for me as my first one of these as a new board member. So that's it for me.
Megan?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I second uh, that, Jim. I really, or trustee in one hand, um, I really appreciate getting to meet the staff uh, at Oak View High School. My first Board Office Hours. Uh, and I'm really grateful for the time they spent. Uh, it went, we went overtime. They spent a, a good chunk of time just introducing us to their incredible work and telling us about their amazing students. Um, and I also have to second you on the Addams Family. I didn't go on opening night, I went on the second night and it was incredible, totally, our socks, socks totally blown off. Um, I also attended the Oak View Poetry Slam, uh, which was so moving. Uh, the students, the, the poets who uh, performed were incredible. Uh, I, I am so grateful to, to get to attend, um, along with, with trustee Helfstein. Um, and, and lastly, um, as trustee, trustee Hardy mentioned, participated in the C S B A Legislative Advocacy uh, meeting. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I'll just quickly read, um, go through my activities as, as uh, I overlap with all of you a lot. Um, I attended the office hours at the high school at Brookside and in Oak Hills. And, and um, as everyone said, you know, the, it just the chance to have direct communication and hear firsthand concerns and ideas and questions from um, those who work closest with our students. Um, it's just a great exchange of information and it's really invaluable, I think, in helping us make more informed decisions um, that benefit our district. And then the other reason I thought it's important that we continue to do these, because it's a relatively new thing that we've been doing, the board has been doing in the district, is um, for what you said, Jim, which is just the opportunity to build relationships. And um, and going to office hours allows us to um, you know, make connections and foster trust and, and, and really get to know um, people. And I think that that just ultimately helps us. And it, it also, of course, helps us achieve our goals of being accessible and um, transparent and responsive. So uh, I, I, I think they're very important and I hope that they do continue. And I wanted to thank all of the staff that came and took their time um, on their lunch or after school to, to meet with us and talk with us. So thank you for that. Um, I attended Measure S meetings and the Measure S Subcommittee Conference Call, sort of. I got a little um, iced out of the conference call based on technology. Um, but Adam was kind enough to call me and fill me in, um, because for some reason I, I didn't quite connect um, on the conference call. I, like Soyan said, I went to uh, Future Panther Night at Madea. It was just so well done. The staff and the P F A made such a great impression. I was sitting next to Dr. Davis and I just kept looking at him going, you know, that's so, you know, so important or that, so, we're so lucky to have her. It was just every person who spoke, I was in his ear going, um, singing their praises. So I wanted to thank the staff and, and the P F A and the band and the students who performed um, for doing that. Um, I also this, got to fill in for Mrs. Wang um, on the Gate DAC this month. And it was a, a really nice meeting for me to attend because they shared the information um, about the COGAT screener that we just recently, we, the district, just recently um, implemented. And I know that the Gate DAC, it's something that, that they've been working or pursuing, um, implementing for some time now. So to hear some of the data that it was successful, um, um, that group has worked really hard to achieve that. So I wanted to congratulate them and then also um, just say how proud I am that the purpose and what the driving, one of the driving reasons for um, trying to supplement our method for identifying um, Gate students with the COGAT screener is um, for equity, for equity reasons. Um, so that's, that's nice. And I'm gonna say something about this when we get to the end of the night, when we're talking about future um, agenda items. But something that I think would be important is to continue to, to, to use this data and to continue to monitor the data now that we, in the future, next year, something to add to our, our governance calendar. And like Soyan said, I went to the C S B A Legislative Action Training and I met with the Representative um, Assembly Member Irwin's office. And I think Soyan spoke very well about um, what the purpose was. And that is just um, to fully fund the COLA without retroactive cuts to this big grant. Um, the arts music um, grant and really remain focused on sustaining all of these programs that um, we've been tasked with. Um, and then finally, I also got to go to the uh, Oak View Poetry Slam with Megan. And the students were incredible and the, I just wanted to thank you for the invitation and um, thank our teachers who work with those students and really support them in so many ways. So thank you. Okay, those are my comments for this evening. We're moving on to um, remarks from our student board member.
Good evening. I feel like we just had a board meeting, so I can't believe it's already April. And I know there was a special board meeting not too long ago, but although I wasn't able to attend, I did look over the board packet. And I think that the new health course for the sunker is an important and relevant addition to the curriculum. And you mentioned that you went to the Addams Family Musical. And I also went, but I went on the closing night. And I'm very happy I went with my friends because it was beyond spectacular. And I'm just like blown away by everything that happened. And you guys also mentioned that there was the mock college admissions committee. And I was able to help out and see some of you there. So I feel like that was very informational and eye-opening to see how the entire process works, especially how I'm arriving senior next year. And starting last week and until this Thursday, juniors at the high school activity are state testing. And so far, I feel that it's going pretty smoothly. The high school's upcoming events include the Powerpuff Game on Friday at seven, which is the juniors versus seniors girls' flag football game. And additionally, the Saturday is our spring, spring fling dance titled Out of This World, which is the space and celestial theme. I'm crossing my fingers and toes that we will have good weather on these two days. And next week is A S B Elections Week for the upcoming twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four school year. And so candidates that are running opposed will begin campaigning then. Fortunately, I'm unopposed, so I will be here next year. Um, as of this, this concludes my remarks for tonight. Thank you.
Well, we're really happy to have you. Okay, um, remarks from the superintendent.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, first thing I wanted to do is I wanted to thank and give a shout out to O P C A President Virginia Standring and her negotiating team and O P T A President Russ Peters and his negotiating team. And to our district negotiating team, to uh, Stu McGugan, Adam Roush, and Jay Furno. Uh, you guys did it. You guys did a great job. And uh, we really value the partnership with both of our employee unions. And um, we're very glad that you guys were able to uh, T A on uh, the different agreements. So thank you very much, both to uh, O P C A and O P T A. Um, secondly, I wanted to highlight students tonight. And man, there's so many highlights, I almost, I'm probably gonna run out of time here, but I'm gonna do it really fast. So it's, and this is across the district. This is everything from, you know, T, uh, TK all the way up through twelfth grade. First of all, math counts Madea Creek Middle School, first place in the county. That's awesome. Moving on to state, that is such an incredible thing. And congratulations to everybody and uh, you know, teacher Rob Larg and all the students and their families and all that. Next, Spelling Bee, I don't know if you guys know this, but the Ventura County Spelling Bee, we had participants from throughout the district. And we have a fourth grade student at Red Oak Elementary School who took second place in the county Spelling Bee. And that is Iris uh, P S O One. So congratulations to Iris and Principal of Friends at Red Oak and her teacher at Red Oak and everybody else. So congratulations to Iris. Next is speech and debate. I can't remember all the names, but all I know is the number eight. There are eight state qualifiers from the Oak Park High School Speech and Debate Team slash Club that are moving on to state. That's unheard of. Like, that doesn't happen, okay? So congratulations to every single student and um, and, and the advisor. And we're so proud of you. And I go back to seeing them at Brookside Elementary and uh, teaching the Brookside Elementary students on what speech and debate really is. And it was the greatest, I, it was the best thing ever. What is better, ice cream or cake? And I just thought that was the best. What a great debate, because you could kind of debate both, but we all know ice cream is the best, so forget it. Um, moving on to Oak Park High School, again, F B L A. Again, countless numbers of students that won awards and are doing wonderful. So congratulations to Mr. Winkler and all the students involved in that. The Addams Family, I know everybody said it, it was outstanding, incredible. Don't have enough adjectives to describe it, but congratulations. Uh, Ellen Schneider, Stacy McClama, every single student that was involved in this, whether you were a performer on stage or you were in the pit orchestra or in the back with stage crew and all that. What an amazing job. And our choreographer, what tremendous choreography um, in that play. It, it honestly, there's no way that was a high school perform. I mean, if you walked in and you watched that, you would think you're in like a performance at UCLA with a bunch of seniors. Like, it was incredible performance. Um, so that's that. And some other cool things. So last year, we started intramural, interscholastic, um, athletic competition. Um, and, you know, to create more student connections at the middle school. And uh, it encompasses cheerleading and volleyball and basketball and all these different sports. And I wanted to give a shout out, first of all, to um, Brandon Adams, who's the P F A President at Madea Creek for really helping push this last year and really helped working with Ms. Chance and uh, you know, Ms. Gottlieb and Mr. Bajjian to keep it going this year. And um, they're all involved and I think it's all wonderful. And the boys' basketball team went undefeated. Um, you know, the, the whole purpose of this is not to, you know, win at all costs and all that. But it sure is cool when they go undefeated and they beat the three schools from a neighboring district, I will not mention. Um, next, um, congratulations, Oak Park High School. You have the C I F Division Five Girls Basketball Champions this school year. Congratulations, Oak Park High School. But even beyond that, we will be inviting them to the April twenty-fifth meeting because they are C I F champion. But you are also the owners, Oak Park High School, of the Co-C I F Players of the Year. Junior Lindsay Gould and freshman Delaney White. That is amazing. But it, but there's more. Your coach, Will Burr, Mr. Will Burr, was named the Coach of the Year in the C I F Division Five. So that's a wonderful, wonderful thing. And um, the girls defeated Saint Monica Academy of Santa Monica for the Division Five Championship. And if you weren't following it, they went all the way to the state regional semifinals. Um, played a great game and uh, came up against a really, really good Redondo Union team. But if we played them again, we'd beat them. So, you know, there's that. And then And then the last thing, I just, I want to say. Oh, oh, Science Olympiad, another amazing group. More awards, Midea. Yeah, and Oak Park High. It goes on. And I said, I can't remember all this. There's so many amazing things. It's incredible. And I wanted to thank all the teachers and all the staff that have come out to the office hours. Every single school that we've met with, we learn a lot. And if we don't do this, it's really hard to know truly what's going on at a school site. You know, we hear the good, we hear the bad, we hear the ugly, we hear the hey, can we keep doing this? We hear the maybe we should do this. What do you guys think? Can you tell us about this? We don't understand this. You know, I'm so glad we decided to do this last year and continue it this year because this is the way we learn. This is the way we improve and we wouldn't know unless we heard it from you guys. So I want to thank all the staff members, both certificated and classified that have come out. We really, really appreciate it. And I am done.
Thank you. So we're on to item four dot ten, update on student safety and wellness. Hi, Brad.
Good evening, everybody. It is very good to be in person and back, so thank you. This has been a, we all, we all know about the challenges of wellness, mental health, safety that's facing all of the students in this country. And we're not immune in Oak Park. There's, there's a lot that we have had challenges over the last few years, which, again, we're very familiar. This year has been, I think, a really exciting year because even though we have a lot of challenges, a lot of issues, there's a lot that's being done. And I sometimes will say that it actually sometimes gets very overwhelming because of the possibilities that we're actually touching on. Not because of the frustrations, like we can't make headway. We keep going to programs. You're hearing about all these phenomenal programs that have been in place at Oak Park and the successes of our students. That's been a lot of work over a lot of time. And we're starting into these, into new programs and connecting to the things that we do really well. Again, I think we're just scratching the surface to some really exciting things that can make us even better. So again, it's not gloom and doom of what's out there. It's actually a lot of hopeful things that we're doing. That's what I want to share tonight. And again, I, there's a lot of slides. I'm going to try to go as quickly as I can, I promised. But this really was, it's one of our major district goals is to invest in student safety and well-being. And just, I put this up just real quickly. The, the goals were to establish a wellness centers at Oak Park High School and Midea Creek. And to increase access, mental health services overall, to develop a comprehensive counseling plan for TK through 12. Work with our community partners and district staff to provide overall wellness training and supports. Complete a comprehensive district-wide safety review and deliver safety training to all education partners. So a lot that we really wanted to take on this year. And I want to go back to last year. Real briefly, we have, every other year, we take what's called the California Healthy Kids Survey. And we had a presentation last spring about the results from last year. Again, it's taken every other year, so we didn't have this data done this year. We will take it again in the fall. But I wanted to touch on this because a lot of this data that we had last spring presented highlighted the concerns that we wanted to take on and address. And again, these are fairly broad categories. The, I think we shared the breakdowns of some of the questions and how we got to these percentages last year. And I don't want to take that time, but just real briefly, last year's data, you can see in fifth, seventh, ninth and 11th grade, the students who would say that they felt safe most or all of the time. In fifth grade, really, really high. And it starts to decline every class grade that goes up. These scores, by the way, are pretty consistent over long periods of time. If you, we could go back to, you know, 2012, 13 and, I don't know, 15, 16, we could kind of see some of the same things. We've always been struggling with connectedness. And again, the identification that our students will say that, you know, they're, they might feel safe, they're happy at school, but they don't always feel directly connected. The percentages are pretty high. By the way, the fifth grade, I won't go into, but fifth grade seemed to be an anomaly last time. It's always much higher than in the past. Fifty-one percent, I don't know why, I have to, I'd have to go back. But, you know, if you look at seventh grade students saying that, 74% of them say they are connected to the school most or all the time. That's a great number. It still means that a quarter of the students are saying that they're not connected all the time. So we really are paying attention to those that are not in those percentages. That's way too high, that we want all of our students to feel directly connected to what's going on at the schools. Further, there's some key indicators for the mental health that we were operating to try to address. These numbers were definitely higher coming out of the pandemic years. And you can see that when, when we have students who are identifying that they have frequent sadness, those are high percentages. Social emotional distress, considered suicide, very high numbers percentage-wise. These are not very different than what you see state and nationwide. We, again, we know the difficulties that our students were facing coming out of the pandemics. So we looked at this data last year and a lot of things, of course, well, what do we do? We have been trying to do a lot of interventions with our counselors. We know that Oak Park has had the best counselor ratio, counselor to student ratio in Ventura County and beyond. And our counselors are incredible. Our support staff is incredible. How do we further those causes to try to meet the needs of these students? And that's where we, we started with those goals. Our biggest initiative this year is the establishment of wellness centers. And initially last year about this time, we were looking at trying to establish a wellness center at the high school. And very quickly, we knew that we needed to also have a program at the middle school as well. We were looking at how do we fund that? We were looking for grants. And particularly I have to say, Dr. Davis was really instrumental in helping us procure the, a grant from the Ventura County Behavioral Health. And we went full, full gear ahead to, to begin wellness centers. I will also call out and thank the, the high school, particularly the, we said, we want to build a, an actual center, pick a room. We need, you know, furniture, we need how to structure the walls and everything. And our, our business department, our Brendan Callahan and our, our facilities management, and then the high school pulled that together. And we, we, we established a wellness center pretty quickly. Now, I want to bring down our wellness center counselors. Fatima Hernandez and Alexis Jordan. Ragini, can you go to the next slide?
Brad, before you go on, could I just ask a question about the California Healthy Kids surveys? Is that shared with our staff and how that, that information is given out to them so they know these numbers too?
It is shared with the sites, yes. And I'm trying to remember how, usually we share it with the principals at principals' meeting and leadership. And then we go over with the individual sites. Usually the principals will take the data that they want to share most appropriate to their sites and share with their staffs.
Okay, so it's shared. Okay, thank you.
There's other data, by the way, we have had with the challenge success program that further. And we definitely want to try to look at doing those, those surveys again. I didn't want to bring all of that in. Just to say that in establishing the wellness centers, a little bit of a timeline. We look for the grants and then we, most important thing we could do is look for the hiring. I'm thrilled with the, the people that we were able to hire. And you're going to get to meet them in just a moment here. And as I said, developing the actual physical wellness center at the high school, we're still going to be looking at where we can do a physical or what that actually looks like at the middle school. It will, it will necessarily be different. Middle school is, as we know, different. We just got the funding through for the Prevention Student Assistance Grant. It's a three-year grant that funds a giant chunk of the Wellness Center counselors and our counseling clerk. And we will be adding as, as we go through this a little bit further, training and interventions. There's, there's something called BRIM, Brief Risk Reduction Interview and Intervention Model, that will be available for students and families to have high, high-level interventions. And then we'll talk a little bit later also about the development of assessments, review, surveys. How do we identify students, what interventions are needed and, and how we monitor them? And again, I'll talk a little bit about wellness team meetings a little bit later and trying to get to earlier interventions and connecting to larger other programs that are also going on in the, in the district. So, without further ado, I do want to introduce Ms. Hernandez and Ms. Jordan to talk about each of the site wellness centers and how those have developed this year. So, Hernandez first.
Hello, thank you for having me here today. So I'm going to start by speaking about the high school wellness center from the beginning to where it is now. So around August, October, I was visiting other wellness centers around the county. Moore Park College, Moore Park High School, Frontier High School, Buena High School, and then doing some Zoom meetings with other ones because it started to, the year started to pick up and it just started to become a little harder to do that time. So getting insight on how they started their center, the ups and downs, challenges that they had while they were creating their center. September through November, I was working with furnishing the space and working with the grant and also PFA into getting it furnished and getting items in there for students to use. Getting all that information from the others wellness centers that I did visit, seeing what they had and some of the favorite things that the students were going towards in those centers. Also trying to get a check-in system and what we wanted to do for that and how we wanted students to come in. Also doing the wellness virtual website, which we created and is now available with community resources and a middle school page and a high school page. During that time, I was also meeting with the counselors and starting to get to know the students so they knew who I was and why I was there. And then November, December, it started to open up. So we were doing class tours and we had, I invited the teachers to come in to see the space before it was open to students, to see if they had any questions and just to see the space. We started to do more collaborations with outside communities like Teens for Teens and trying to reach out to other different things in the school. For example, APC, we work really closely with APC. Also, the OPUSD School Garden Specialist, which is really fun. I was collaborating with her. And also working really closely with VCBH Suzanne, who, you know, brought in a lot of information from other wellness centers that we weren't able to get to. So now the center has three rooms and I kind of wanted to talk about each one that we had in there. So we have the general area of the center where we have Tracy Baron, who's our clerk, and welcomes students and checks in with them. We also have a puzzle table. We have resources, a wall and a table that's for resources. Students can grab anything on that area. We have games. We have a little library with books on sleep, meditation, breathing, magazines on mental health. We have music playing in the background and different surround sounds all over the center. We also have a visual screen with, you know, it could be an aquarium or something playing in the background. We also have a room that we call the workroom with tables where students can take a coloring book in there for extra space or if they want to work on something during lunch, they can. And then we have something that I call the quiet room, but the students are starting to call the dark room. It's low light and it has different lighting, but it's very low light and that's one of their favorite rooms. It has different seatings like beanbag chairs, but also regular chairs because sometimes they're kind of hard to get out of the beanbag chairs. And all around the center, we have different fidgets that they can try while they're in there. We also have weighted blankets, which a lot of the students haven't really used, so explaining why the weighted blankets help. And then we have my office, so I'm always available in there if there is a student that comes in and needs to talk, I'm available. So that's kind of the structure of what the wellness center looks like. And if you haven't been, please come by so you can see it. And then, so some of the challenges that I kind of saw is a little bit of the data collection that's kind of observing. It's an observing year where we have to see what kind of data to collect, but also how to gather it. The check-in form and the way we are doing it, I can foresee some changes in that as well. Promoting the wellness center is also another thing, but we're working on it. We've created social media and starting to do Parents Square posts. And then also clarifying to the students and the teachers and parents what the protocols are and creating those as well. Yeah, I think that's, that's in general, in a nutshell, what we've done with the wellness center. Thank you.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Alexis Jordan. I am Midea Creek's Middle School Wellness Counselor. And I'm really excited to share with you where our program is at the moment. Ms. Hernandez did a great job of explaining the timeline of the high school wellness center. But as Brad said earlier, the middle school one looks a bit different. It's less of a physical space, although I do have a space where I meet one-on-one with students. It's more of a program and various interventions happening within the school. I started at the end of August and as someone that's new to the community, my real first plan of action was to get to learn the community. What are the needs here? Where are students looking for support? Where are families looking for support? So one of the first places of action that I wanted to take was collecting data. So both quantitative and qualitative. So I sent out surveys to students, staff, parents, as much information as I could collect to really see where students were feeling like they wanted the most support, especially through wellness-related programs. And I really wanted to get out there, be visible on campus, get to talk to people, meet as many people as I could. So what really first came out of that was some of the topics that I have listed here, which a lot of our students reported feeling stressed. We have some really high achievers at this school in this, in this district. And so that can lead to feeling anxious, feeling stressed, feeling overwhelmed. So that really became one category that I said, wow, this is really coming up a lot. Another category was, because it's middle school, wanting more ways to connect with others. And I think especially in the time that we're in, that that is something that students are really craving. They want those in-person connections. They want to learn how to make new friends. They want to build those communication skills. So that was another area that I really saw, like, oh, students are really interested in this. So after I really got to know the community a bit more, talked to the amazing counseling team that I get to work with, talked with teachers, talked with students, I developed a multi-tiered system of support through our wellness center. So the tier one supports is the real fun wellness activities. And we have such a wide range of activities that we've been doing at the middle school. It includes anything from yoga to tea parties to friendship bracelet making to Kahoot games, all sorts of different topics. And so we have a range of about 20, even up to 100 students per activity because we have two lunch periods, so between the two lunch periods. And we've had a really wide range of students in attendance, so that's been really cool to see. Some of the collaborations that I've been able to do through those wellness activities have been through groups that are already existing on campus, so student-led groups such as ASB and CJSF. And they've actually helped me to run some of the wellness activities happening at the school. So that's been really fun to provide some leadership opportunities for some of those students and for them to give me feedback. So I've been even going into the ASB classes and asking for their feedback. What do you think about this idea? And then they kind of helped me create different events. Some of the other collaborations that we've got to do is also through the Howard Group. We've been doing some different work in partnership with them. PFA sponsored some great presentations, such as a mental health presentation through Engage. And so being able to partner with them and extend some of that learning into the wellness activities that we're doing on campus. The next level of support is our tier two supports. So I've also been running small student groups. We've had a new student group, so that was for new students in sixth grade. And then we also had a second group for new students coming in in seventh and eighth grade. I've done an organizational skills group. I have a soon- I have a soon-to-becoming preparing-for-high-school group for our eighth graders and a weekly open group that's called Lunch Bunch. So that's weekly where any student may be looking for a space. Maybe they've been having a hard time with friends or meeting friends, or maybe they're in a fight with some of their friends, they can come and join Lunch Bunch any week. The tier three supports really consist of individual counseling. So through there, I've had over 200-plus individual student visits. And you can see on the graph that I have there, the different topics that have really been covered in a lot of those tier three supports, those individual student meetings, with SEL being the highest one and that covers such a wide range of different experiences happening in middle school. And you can see also mental health and academics being on the list in addition to risk assessments and family and incident reports as well. So it's kind of through this multi-tiered system, address students both in groups individually and through some of the really fun activities we've been able to do at the school. Some of the things I feel like have been going really well are the collaboration between the different groups on campus. It has been an amazing school to collaborate with different groups. So it's been a very welcoming community. And I think we've also done a great job of supporting student need. The areas, oh yeah. Social emotional learning, yes. And so in middle school, that can cover anything from building confidence to dealing with peer conflicts, to developing communication skills. And I think some of the areas that I could see us still growing are because we don't have a designated space. Sometimes I have to be really flexible and sometimes that can make planning ahead a little bit challenging as I'm trying to figure out where will we go and where can I do this? And so I've been really creative in, in where to provide some of these interventions. And I think I would still really like to grow in the area of communication and just enhancing communication between the whole community about what the wellness center can provide. So, thank you.
Brad, can I interject really quick?
Of course.
First of all, Fatima, Alexis, thank you for everything you're doing. Secondly, thank you to the Oak Park High and Media Creek Middle School administrations. You know, Matt, Natalie, Jason, and you know, Gia, Samantha, and Alexis, and also to the counseling teams at both schools for welcoming these two with open arms and collaborating and, and they're a whole counseling team. And I think it's really, really important. But the thing to remember is all these student contacts, all these groups, all these things they're doing, if we didn't have them, this would be on the plates of our regular academic counselors. And all that would do would be to slow down the progress our academic counselors are making with our students, you know, no matter what it is, right? You know, individual meetings with students, scheduling, like whatever it is, all the myriad of activities the academic counselors do, they'd have to do this too. And so that's the beauty of having specific, individual, highly skilled, highly talented people doing these jobs. Because now the counseling team has expanded and it's multifaceted. And then you add in at the high school, our college and career counselor, Ms. Fitz, and every aspect of the, the ASCA domains of counseling, the American School Counselors Association domains, there's three domains, they're all being met. And that doesn't mean there's growth that doesn't have to happen, of course. I mean, we're always improving, there's always growth, there's always new things we find out. You know, data collection is a big deal. I can tell you from having VCBH grants before, that'll be taken care of with the grant because there are requirements of the grant. And so we're gonna have to do that, but they will walk us through. Mr. Benioff will lead that with the different groups, Red Leaf Resources and such. But I'm just really, really proud of what these two school sites have been able to accomplish. And if you think about it, it's like super short time. This just doesn't happen. And the team, including MNO and Business Services and Student Safety and Support Services, have done such a great job, you know, and pupil services, such a great job working together to make this happen. This has been a real team effort is my point. And I want to thank everybody.
And I, I really want to echo the, one of the main pieces that we, we talked about when we did hire the, the, these counselors, that this was not going to be a, a program in a silo. We didn't want a room somewhere else. And that's some of the things you do see it, in some other schools and districts where they just have a wellness center and it's kind of its own entity. We really wanted to have, as Dr. Davis said, a, a team approach. And the, the other counselors really do need a lot of acknowledgement because they, they, they work hand in hand with, with these two. And there's a lot of systems, we're creating systems. And as, as you will see as we kind of discuss further here, the, the data gathering, the idea of how, how we then plan for what, what is the next interventions, all these things have to be systemic and that's what we're creating. It can't be on one or two people. It's, it's really with those teams. So the, the, all the rest of the counselors and support staff have done an amazing job of working with the wellness programs as well. Briefly, we have thrown a lot of training at the wellness counselors and they've, they've been going to all sorts of conferences and, and trainings and they're attending webinars. And there's, I think there's more that I didn't get onto this slide. So, and, and we, we just were reading through the, the, the new grant and there's going to be even more. So they're getting really well-trained. But there's just some of those lists there. To the next slide, please. And you just, one, one of the things that we, one of our grants is called the PEI or Prevention Early Intervention Grant. And the, the data that we collect for, for this does collect how many contacts we have in the counseling, any counselors, not, not just wellness counselors, but any counseling. And some of the, the big stark data that, that they ask for is when we have contacts for risk assessments or threat assessments. And just side by side to take a look at the first semester of last year compared to the first semester of this year. It was pretty brutal last year. It's, it's still not, I mean, it's not easy, it's not good, there's still some high numbers here. But you can see in 2022, where even at the elementary school, we were doing an awful lot of threat assessments and suicidal ideation assessments for students who are talking about harming themselves. And threats can be to other students, can be to themselves, things like cutting and stuff like that. But we had an awful lot of assessments for possible suicides and suicide ideation. Those numbers comparatively have gone down this year and that's good. But again, you can still see that we have still a lot of very, very severe situations that our counselors are handling. And so we're looking to, to try to, you know, again, earlier intervention and cut into these, these numbers before it comes to these types of crises. But I just wanted to have, have that initial data from this year before you. And we'll, we'll be able to share the, the whole year when we, we finish the year. Next slide.
Brad, really quick, just a little bit of context with this. As you can see, it's, and it's not just Oak Park, you know, nationwide, as Brad said when he started, this pandemic really, really hurt children. I mean, as adults, we know how it affected us. And with all of our life experiences and all our resilience and everything that we've had, you know, our children, we're trying to build resilience in them, we're trying to build coping skills in them. We're trying to teach them life lessons and life skills and things like this. And it, it has really taken a toll on, on our children in America, not, not just Oak Park. And right now, we're talking about Oak Park, which is what we're focused on because it's Oak Park Unified School District. But this is across the entire country. And I think by our fast, thank you to the board for pivoting so quickly to approve these wellness centers and the wellness center counselors and all this. Because if you didn't pivot this quickly, these numbers could not just, they would, may not just be ideation and stuff like that, okay? It could be worse and we all know that. And so thank you to the Board of Education for doing that, for having the vision, for understanding what we're facing here. And I do believe with all these things that we're doing, you'll see these numbers come down year by year. Contextually, remember, there's 4,300-plus students in our school district. So when you look at those numbers, it is staggering when you look at it initially and then you think of 4,300 kids and you're not sure how many of these are duplicated and so on and so forth. It, it kind of puts it in a context and makes you breathe a little easier. But even one child having ideation, even one child wanting to do self-harm or those types of things, that gets your attention right away. And believe me, these professionals on our school sites every single day have their eyes and ears open to every single thing these kids are saying and what they're hearing and so on and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. And just real briefly, the, the, the next steps to, to all of this, this is not a one-year implementation. As I said at the beginning, we're, we, we started this, this, each of these grants that we, we had are actually very deliberately three-year grants and with the, at least, sort of hopeful promise that they will continue, you know, three years, three years after that. Because they know that the development of these programs are long-term. We, we're not going to establish a, the complete system and, and programs that we really want to do, things that will involve more, you know, parent, parent information nights, group, group work with certain students, speakers series, things like that. There's just a whole host of things that we, we will want to do. And you're gonna have those ready by next Thursday, right? Okay. But the, these really are multi-year processes. So the next steps are going to be more, more training, developing a student assistance program that, again, I'll talk about that in a few minutes, but creating those systems of, of identification and intervention. And establishing wellness teams in, in the processes. And then the next steps, as we've talked about, you know, how, how do we further implement the, the space and program needs more at, at MCMS? So that's kind of the, the more immediate future to, to all of these programs. Next, please. I really, I, I could, I could go through this all night long. We have been taking pieces from different areas, like I say, that really exist and have existed a long time and, and some new programs to how do we really create a comprehensive program of, of, of finding, finding students when they are maybe just starting to appear to need supports? As early as possible, intervene as early and as completely as possible. And this is not to say that we don't do that, we do that incredibly well. But having a, a real cohesive process and some of the, as you talk to more, more people, more departments, people start saying, you know what, that connects directly to this, can we be a part of that? And Marcus Conance, our, our People Services Director and our, connected all of us with Danielle Stomel about the full process with our multi-tiered support systems program. We've been getting a lot of traction on that academically, particularly at the elementary schools with the academic screeners and the quarterly meetings with, with teachers and offering, you know, finding out supports there. Fits right into what we will, what we want to do with identifying students, not just academically, but socially and emotionally, where there may be behaviors that start arising. Those are those green boxes, finding different things where attendance, academic progress, behavior, parent input, teacher input. If we start all having different pieces to, is there something that we, a student might need? And we, we pull all that information together and then more directly address the needs of, of the students again, as early as possible. The, the MTSS, you've, you've probably seen that pyramid on, on the top right corner there. That, that is what, you know, generally the, the, the low tiers and Alexis, thank you, you did a great job of showing how we're already doing that with the wellness, what, what is available to everybody? Supports for all students. Yellow or tier two is more direct and targeted and then red is more in-depth and, and intensive intervention. So this chart that here is trying to create a system where it, it's based on that same tier one, two, three, but we have these systems that will connect to wellness center teams, the, the, the data we get from all of our counselors, all of these different areas, what comes out of our, our existing intervention teams like student study teams, referrals to special education or 504. How do all these things get coordinated? So it's not, again, just different programs operating separately. And so this is just a visual representation of kind of the systems we're trying to create over time. Each one of these boxes, we could probably go into very, very in-depth and we will at some point, but I just don't want to do that tonight. I just wanted to give a visual if I could. So, Rog, any further? The, the, part of the, the goals was to have a, a comprehensive counseling plan and also review and development of a suicide prevention plan adopted. Some of this has been delayed just because we have not been able to fully have the comprehensive counseling plan finalized and looked at by all of the counselors. And, and frankly, that's part of, because I was out for quite a while and was, we've delayed some of those meetings. We, we are still in process and hope to have that by next month. And, but you can also see where so many new aspects of the counseling programs have come in this year and have to be part of that plan. So that's, that's part of what's being developed. And again, both the suicide prevention plan and comprehensive counseling plan, I hope to have before the board next month. It was asked, you know, one of the, the, the big, the investment in our counselors, just listing how many, I, I asked all the counselors from the sites what, what trainings they've gone to. And this is again, kind of a short list. We have quite, quite a few of our, this isn't like one counselor went to each one of these. We had teams go to a, a lot of these trainings or do, do this en masse. So just wanted to point out that we've, not just our wellness counselors, but all of our counselors have been attending an awful lot of training this year, which is wonderful. Next slide. And then shifting, there, there is some, some segue to this because obviously safety overall has, has been on every educator's mind and parent's mind and student's mind. And we, we were asked to do a, a full comprehensive safety review this year. The, the board did hire a, a safety consultant with Commander Pentis. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here this evening, he's traveling. But the, the concerns of, of safety definitely and obviously overlap to the wellness and, and mental health that we have. And so not, not to separate topics necessarily, you'll see some, some overlap here. But to do a full comprehensive safety review, we started back in, in May and June of last year, went site by site, we did surveys of staff. And really some of the, the main topics that we, we came up with, or the main priorities, I should say, was training. We had not really had comprehensive training for a few years. And the, looking at all the locks and locked doors and the ability to quickly lock doors throughout the campuses, fencing was, was a high priority. Redoing our, reinstating our visitor system and taking a look at maybe alert systems. And again, we hired Commander Pentis as a safety consultant to start our, our trainings. We walked every single campus and, and developed the, the priorities for the, the training and other security measures. We also, the county started holding seminars every month. These have been huge, safety, prevention, prevention of, for violence on, on campuses. It was put on by our, by VCOE and, and our risk management programs. And they, they hired a company that is connected to the Secret Service, Homeland Security and, and the FBI. Commander Pentis actually has helped with the development of the training that they, they did. This has been extensive, we send teams every month to these, to these trainings. And I, I think we're gonna be digesting and continuing working with the information we get from, from these, these trainings for a very long time. And, and, but that, that's, it's just such a large thing that every school is taking a look at in depth at what, what is needed for prevention. So our emergency operation plans, last month, we, we approved the, or you approved the comprehensive safety plans. And as I said last month, those are going to be expanded and expanded because we had more trainings and more information that, oh, we need to do that, we need to do that. So again, these are long-term things in, that are going to be in process and reviewed constantly. constantly. And of course, we have our, all the sites have emergency drills, follow-up reviews, and continuously identifying needs. With the safety trainings, this was our number one priority this year, was training all staff, and we mean all staff. And Commander Pentis has done actually two rounds of, of training. There was kind of an initial introductory to situational awareness and how to handle your, how to think about and handle situations in an emergency. It got to the second phase where there was direct strategies for run, hide, fight. And he made himself available to any staff, any of the teachers, to go to their individual classrooms or offices and actually troubleshoot, you know, if, if this was my classroom, what does it look like? There's an assailant, what happens? How do, how would he suggest they, they handle that? When those, and a lot of our staff avail themselves to that, and he's still doing that. And then just more recently, he started getting to, speaking to student groups. And the, the next phases that we're really looking to do is how do we have this as a continuous cycle of training, review? And, you know, also, we, we want to have, again, more systemically, how we, we train the students beyond just, just the drills. And I also want to mention, he also did the parent, or helped arrange the parent information night on fentanyl awareness. And he met with the high school seniors on fentanyl awareness. So that, of course, is another major topic these days. So the, the trainings have, have gone on and continue, and again, the next steps is how do we make that just a regular part of our, of our training every year for staff and students? Next, please. And then, again, the, the, how, how do we, how do we avert violence in the first place? How do we stop and not just react to something? How do we actively prevent violence from happening? And this is one of the biggest takeaways that we got from the, the Secret Service and FBI trainings is that, you know, we, we tend to think about, okay, putting up the fences and people want armed guards and all these other things. Eighty, eighty-four percent of assailants are, in, in high school, or high school, middle school, you can see that almost all the assailants are high school, middle school, and they're known and within the system. They're not usually from the outside. They are somebody who is a, a student with, within the, the system, or has recently graduated, or has been suspended or expelled, or things like that. But usually, they're, they're known. So the, the, you know, again, do you harden the schools? Or do you work towards the, the assessment and intervention? And their major focus, most, most of the trainings actually have been on how do we develop a threat assessment, or what we're calling wellness teams, to identify as early as possible and intervene with, with students who potentially may, if we didn't intervene down the road, they may become assailants. That's the, that's the real major focus. We're still not going to ignore what we need to do to try to physically protect, you know, again, locked doors and things. We're still going to continue to take a look at the fencing and other initiatives, things like that. But really, our main focus is, is the mental health, wellness, and intervention. That is what, that's the, the prime recommendations from, from those groups. You know, I'm way past my time, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. Excellent. So again, we, we've done, we, we put on door locks and lock blocks on every door in, in the district. Lock blocks just can slide, slide across real easily when, if, to keep a door locked. We've talked about the, the emergency operation plans, and, and we redid the templates and what's necessary for those. We do have some fencing ideas and proposals that will still be looked, looked at as going forward. Our Raptor ID systems, badge systems were reinstalled at all the sites. We're looking at, again, still modern, alert systems and PA system modernization. And we have been looking at the routine communications testing through Parent Square, our communications internally, if there's, if there's an emergency, how our parents and how our students notified as, as quickly as possible. How do we gather information? Reporting systems, WITIP, the Go Guardian systems, and we're looking, maybe even updating things that if students are, if they're using our technology and they're searching for, writing certain things, that, that, that gets alerted. The establishment, again, wellness teams that, that can become threat assessment teams and connect to the, the more intensive interventions, the student, student assistant programs, and connecting to resources. We want, we want to be putting the plans and more access and information up on, on the site website, so everyone knows what, what these, these, these emergency plans are, what, what, what to do in an emergency. And we actually would like to work towards like a training and actually do like a simulation with, with the Sheriff's Department, SWAT team, fire, and, and our staff. We haven't done that in a number of years, and it is recommended, we would like to work towards doing that. So we're going to work with Commander Pentis on that as well. I think that's it. Questions?
I just, I was going to just go first, only because I have a question about this slide before you go off of it. On the addition of WITIP, I, I know that we have, is that, I don't know what that is, because I know that we have the.
We, we have, we have reported systems like by, by site. And those are pretty up and running and, and comfortable. The, the county is paying for a more, more broad WITIP system. We, we, we still need to roll that out further to, because you'll see, there's old signs still around of the old WITIP phone number. Now, there, there's a, there's a new dedicated number just for Oak Park, and there's even the QR codes, somebody can.
So WITIP doesn't go to us, it goes to?
It goes to the county and then to us. They, we have contacts designated for each site and, of course, us at the district office, that even on the weekend, if, if there's something that is determined to be, this is, that, this is needed now, they'll, they'll give us a call.
Okay. And then I have the same question about Go Guardian. So is it like look for words? Or is it, that's?
Right now, right now, the basic, the basic that, that we have right now really catches keywords like suicide.
Suicide, okay.
Stuff like that. There's, there's some other levels to it that we, we might be able to do that, that can be a bit more distinct in catching, catching things of concern.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to jump in because it was that slide.
First of all, I just wanted to thank you and all the staff involved in this. It's, I, beyond what you presented here, I can imagine how much work has gone into this and has been going into this. And I, you know, I think you've made this point already, but just to underline it, that, you know, the investment of, of time and money and effort into wellness, you know, the umbrella of wellness is not just a focus on wellness, it is a, a key piece in terms of safety, as well as, you know, we're about to hear the Ds and Fs reports, as well as academic performance, those things bolster each other and mutually inform each other. So without that, there would, there would be a key piece missing. So I think we're, this is, we're in the right place, and this is so impressive, the efforts made here and what you're planning to do. And I really feel, when you said, Brad, that this is sort of the tip of the iceberg, I really, I feel that energy here, and I, and I, I, I feel the same way. I, I see so much potential here that I think you probably all already have plans to tap into, but you're sort of building the plane as you are flying it. So I, I appreciate that challenge as well. I just had a couple quick recommendations, which you may already be planning to do. But I, I would recommend, at the appropriate time, creating a mapping or flow chart, something visual, maybe by site, of the student wellness resources and the processes and roles. You provided that great one, that was sort of the overarching, an overarching map, but something maybe with literally the POC links to, to relevant forums and things like that at each node. In my line of work, that's called a referral mechanism, and you want these to be practical, something that someone can refer to, very user-friendly and quick, a visual reference. But one of the drawbacks to that, or a caveat to keep in mind, is you just need to make sure somebody's assigned to keep those updated. So a heads up there. And then I also just wanted to recommend as well, if this isn't already happening, and again, it will probably be down the road, but seeing how, at the middle school and high school sites, where, on certain types of data, where you can make sure you're comparing apples to apples, so that you can follow indicators across the middle school and, and high school matriculation of students. And finally, I just wanted to point out that on that chart that you, that you made, it's a small formatting thing, but to me, it's really, it's evidence of an important focus on our students, the fact that you could have organized this around roles or type of intervention, but you organized it centered on the student, which I think is, speaks volumes and is so important to keep as, as our anchor throughout all of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes?
I was going to ask about the fencing for the schools. I'm curious to know, does that necessarily stop somebody from wanting to go inside a school?
No, not, not necessarily that. I mean, that's one of the things, as, as I will quote Commander Pentis a lot, you're looking for layers of protection. So, you know, there's different things that you can put, put up to, to delay. It may not completely stop somebody from, from coming in, but it, when, when you're talking about an assailant, the, the matter of time is critical. And if you can delay somebody for 20 seconds, 30 seconds, that can be critical and can save a whole lot of lives. It, it's also sometimes a, a matter of, you know, of that access. If you, the, the more you limit access, the, the more, you know, limited chances somebody might be able to come on. Can it completely stop somebody? No. But there, there are different layers that you want to, you want to take a look at, how do you, you create layers of protection? So not just one thing, just putting up a fence won't do it, but a whole system of things that you're going to be doing on a campus, you know, including the, the people, the communications, the door locks, all of these things can, can actually be much more effective in saving lives, but not just the one thing, no. There's also things that we want to look at for fencing, like also how to have exit routes, crash gates. So it's not just keeping somebody in, but, or from coming in, but how can we very efficiently get kids off campus if need be? And, you know, the, the crash gates that are on the campuses, we may need a few more of those to, to facilitate that.
And I was going to ask Ms. Hernandez, would you, I heard that like MCMS is having ASV connect with the Wellness Centers. I was wondering if I could have the high schools, like advertise anything that's ongoing in the Wellness Center to get to more students about that.
So actually, at the beginning, when we first started opening up, I did talk to ASV, and you guys were promoting for me for a while, and then I had APC come in to do that as well. And I know there's some connection between APC and ASV too, some of the same students, which is really awesome. But yes, the more the merrier.
I just wanted to share some feedback about the High School Wellness Center. Ms. Hernandez, I had a parent rave to me about their child's experience there. They were going through a rough patch, and it just really made all the difference for this particular student. I think there were other instances I've heard of as well. So just please know, your important work is just really making a huge difference, and it's just providing a much-needed space for our students. And it's, Ms. Jordan, thank you also for just being so creative without having a dedicated space at the middle school and doing so many wonderful activities. So just thank you both for really kind of starting from scratch, really, and, and really going with it and really making a difference. And thank you, Brad and Dr. Davis, for really kind of spearheading these efforts and being a champion for these wellness centers. So thank you.
No, I just, I really do want to echo, I, I'm just so proud of, you know, we, I think started this conversation a year or two ago about having a comprehensive counseling program. I mean, the district did have the, you know, the foresight to invest in counseling, you know, elementary counselors at each of the school sites, but just we're continuing to expand upon that and grow, and the wellness centers and the two wonderful counselors that we've added to the Wellness Centers has been such a great addition, and it's such, at such an important time. And, you know, I am just looking forward to the continued collaboration. You know, when I, when I think about the topics on the agenda, and I, you know, we're going to hear about the health course at, the proposed health course at the middle school, and I, I think about how that all ties together, and I'm already thinking, oh, wow, what you're hearing from the students and what they need and what you're kind of seeing at the Wellness Centers can help inform some of the, the topics, you know, in that health class. And so, so just all the cross-pollination and the collaboration going on, it's just really wonderful to see, and I just am, just looking forward to seeing the growth and, and what, and what you guys will continue to do. So thank you.
Okay. I just want to say one last thing, which is that it was, I don't think it was two years ago, it was a year ago, that he, that Dr. Davis took us, some staff, to a field trip, and we saw a very established and well-run and successful wellness center. And I remember thinking, well, I, I know we're going to do this, but like, I, I was thinking this would be something that would be done years from then. And so to see this tonight, I kind of have goosebumps because it really, I'm very proud of all of you, of our district, for acting so swiftly. And I know that there are a lot of factors that enabled us to do that, but I just think it's quite an accomplishment that we are here, like you said, just the beginning of so much, but so much potential and such a needed resource. So I just wanted to thank everyone and just mention how, that the speed in which we've done this is, is phenomenal. So thank you.
Thank you, President Helfstein and all the board members, Tess, everybody up here, right? And I would be remiss, thank you for reminding of that, because I would be, I wanted to give a thank you to the Lock and Yoda High School staff, Principal Cartonall and all those people at my, one of my former districts, for allowing us to come and spend like the whole day with them. And that was Principal McClanahan, Assistant Principal Smith, Assistant Superintendent Roush, myself, and Trustee Helfstein. I hope, if I hope I'm not leaving anybody out, but that was a, what was that? Oh, yeah, yeah, oh my gosh. And the counselors in the high school, you know, who do a great job every single day what they do, but they were critical on that visit. They were extremely critical, and I'm just forgetting people today for some reason. But, but anyway, that visit framed, it, it created a frame of reference for us. And so the reason I did that was because I wanted to make sure we kind of knew sort of what, look, it looked like, because it's always easier to create something when you've seen something, right? It's just a picture in your mind, you've experienced it. But the conversations that Trustee Health, President Helfstein, and Ms. Smith had, and our counselors had with their counselors, is what sort of framed the vision. It's a really, really powerful thing. So again, I just, I wanted to thank everybody for going, but I wanted to thank Lock and Yoda High School for allowing us to visit.
Okay. So we'll move on. Thank you so much for your presentation. It's really informative, and we appreciate it. So we're going to move on to item four dot eleven, report on the number of students earning a grade of D R F.
Well, good evening. It's nice to be here and see all of you guys. Hope you stay dry on your way in. I don't hear any craziness outside, so maybe it's settled down a bit. All right. So my first presentation here tonight is going to be about our Ds and Fs. We're going to be looking at first semester Ds and Fs at Oak Park High School, and then we're going to be looking at second quarter, first semester Ds and Fs, and then second quarter Ds and Fs from Medea Creek. So with that, I'd like to begin by looking at Medea Creek, and I'd like to recognize we have some of our fantastic Medea Creek staff here. We have Alexis and Samantha and, and Gia and, and Alexis, Counselor Alexis. So we're very thankful to them for all the work they do in helping us gather this information and in, in working with the data once we gather it to better inform instruction. I'd also like to thank Ellen Chevalier, who is my right-hand person. She's not here. Ellen Chevalier, who is my right-hand person. She's not here tonight, but she puts it together, all this data, she gets everything from everybody, compiles it, and she's really good, being a former Tectosa with all these graphs and such. So I'm indebted to her always, so I wanted to recognize that as well. All right, second quarter DNF list analysis. So tonight we're going to be comparing quarter two from 2022 with the quarter two from last year. We had 1,028 students last year in quarter two that we were looking at. And in this year, we have 1,001. As you know, we do have slight declining enrollment, so these numbers do reflect that declining enrollment as well. So we're going to be looking at these student marks, these 1,000 students and the 606 marks that they generated. All right, this is your overall marks, look for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, broken down by Ds and Fs, and then totals in the column on the far right-hand side here. Please note that the numbers shown in this presentation count a student as many times as the number of Ds and Fs they earned. For example, if a student earned two Ds and one F, they will be counted three times towards the total. Okay? Because we're looking at the total number of marks on this slide here. So this is the total number of Ds and Fs earned. There's a total of 267, which accounts for 4.4% of the total overall marks. Just FYI, last year, Ds and Fs accounted for a total of 3.6. So that is an increase this year from this time last year at Medea Creek. Okay, so here's some quarter two, 2022, 2023 results here. So this slide shows the total number of students who earned at least one D R F. So this isn't the total number of marks like the last slide, but rather the total number of students who actually earned one or more D R F. All right. So you can see here that the highest was at seventh grade with the 18.4% of students earning a D R F and a grand total of 13.4%. Just as a frame of reference, last year, there were 11.5% of Medea Creek students that earned at least one D R F. So that is up as well, the total number of students that received a D R F this year. All right. On this slide, we see a two-year comparison of quarter two marks broken down by grade level and letter grade. The lighter blue represents last year's quarter two and the darker blue represents this year's quarter two. There was a decrease in the number of sixth grade students earning both Ds and Fs, which is good news, but an increase, as you can see, in both seventh and eighth grade students earning Ds and Fs in quarter two. But I do want you to notice how few there are. They're still very few. It's exciting to see, but if you're one of those students, it's not exciting, right? So want to recognize the fact that we are doing incredible work and that these are very, very low numbers we're talking about, but they are still, each one of them a student and each one of them someone we want to address. All right, next slide here. Here we are comparing students with multiple Ds and Fs over the past two years. Again, the lighter blue represents last year's quarter two and the darker blue represents this year's quarter two. So the number of students receiving a D R F decreased from 6.3% to 5.7%, but the number of students earning two or three Ds or Fs increased. Their number of, the number of students earning four Ds or Fs stayed about the same. And then we, for the past few years, have had no students that have had all six Ds and Fs. Thank goodness. So that's our breakout for students receiving multiple Ds and Fs. All right, moving on to our next slide. This is looking at quarter two of the 2122 school year versus quarter two of 2223. We had zero students, again, like we just said, with six Ds or Fs. In 202122, we had 11.4% of students with one or more. And then this year, we had 13.4. And then Ds and Fs accounted for 3.6% of all marks last year and then 4.4% this year. So we have an upward trend here in Ds and Fs this year at Medea Creek. All right, onto our next slide. This is going to show our boys and girls. And then we have non-binary and together that should add up to be 100%. But you can see a trend that we've seen in other areas. We've discussed this before when we've had DNF presentations. But we see that our boys are receiving a much greater number of Ds and Fs than our girls. So you can see a pretty marked difference here. It looks like it gets even to be larger in the seventh and eighth grade years as our students matriculate upwards. So the lighter blue is the girls and then the darker blue is the boys. All right. So this is a numerical comparison of our males and females. So 50.2% of Medea Creek's student body is males and 49% is female. So we have a few more males than females. And then 0.01% of the student is non-binary. But 59.9% of DF marks in quarter two were earned by boys. So there's some disproportionality there. And you can see that although we have 49.8% of our student body are female, they accounted for only 40.1% of the Ds or Fs. So an area of interest or concern is definitely this comparison. We've actually discussed this, Gia and I were just talking about this the other day. She and Samantha are going to be facilitating some conversations with our leadership team specifically about this discrepancy, some ideas, maybe some ideas about what may be causing this, and then also some ideas for then how can we address this and help mitigate this discrepancy that we're seeing really year after year, over and over again, between the girls and the boys. Here's a look at the DNF data by ethnicity. You'll notice that 11.5% of the student body is Hispanic, but 22% of the Ds and Fs were earned by Hispanic students. There was also discrepancy between the total number of other students, although small, which includes American Indian, Alaska Native, Filipino, Pacific Islander, Hawaiian, et cetera. That group making up only 3.3% of the total student population and yet receiving 7.5% of the Ds and Fs. Okay, so discrepancy there as well. If you look at the next slide, we have ethnic analysis by ethnicity and you'll see it's some overrepresented groups and some underrepresented groups. So, you know, 11.5% as we said, of the student body is Hispanic and yet they made up 22% of the Ds and Fs. That's concerning. Underrepresented, 31.3% of Medea Creek's student body identifies as Asian, but they only account for 10.5% of the Ds and Fs. So that's a, that's a good thing there. But on the flip side, we have an overrepresented student group here. All right. On our next slide, we're looking at our student populations. Here we see our low socioeconomic status students, students with five or four plans, IEPs, as well as our multilingual students. You will notice that there's a discrepancy between the percent of the student body that these groups make up and the number of Ds and Fs that they earned, just across the board. We're on, Rogany, next slide. But if you can see with the bar graphs, you can see on the left is, the lighter blue is the percent of Ds and Fs earned and then in the darker blue is the percent of the student population. So you can see that there's definitely a discrepancy. You would want those bars to be equal. So. All right, moving on to our next slide. Quarter two DNF student population analysis. So here's just a, just a sort of another rundown or way to look at the data. 14.5% of the Medea Creek student body is low socioeconomic status, but they accounted for 29.2% of the Ds and Fs. 51% of Medea Creek's student body have five or four plans, but again, they account for 8.2% of the Ds and Fs. 7.8% of the student body have, are on IEPs and they're 17.6% of the Ds and Fs. 2.7% of this student body are multilingual students and they account for 3.7% of the Ds and Fs. So these are our areas of concern and things we definitely need to look at. On a side note, later in this conversation, we're going to be talking about the new ELD class that we're going to be offering next year, which should hopefully help some of our English learners, our multilingual learners acquiring English. So that'll be something new for them. We're excited to be able to offer that. And again, we are talking with staff and staff has had a lot of different discussions about how to help some of these student groups. It's a little challenging because our, our low socioeconomic status students can't be identified. We can't share that information with staff, with teachers. And so it makes it challenging when you're trying to talk about what are you specifically going to do for these student groups when that's confidential information. Obviously, multilingual learners, we can share that information and teachers should know that and have access to it. Students with disabilities, same thing, and the five or four plans. But we do have this large group of students that obviously has a large discrepancy here that we really aren't at liberty to, you know, pass out lists of names and do that type of thing. So finding some ways to make sure that we're, we're supporting those students. On the next slide, what does DNF monitoring look like? So it's not like we just allow these students to get Ds and Fs. There's a support systems put in place along the way. So at Medea Creek, if you get one D or an F, you have, the teacher will be contacting the family. If you have two Ds or Fs, the counselor reaches out as well as the teacher. And three Ds or Fs, you have counselor, admin, support, personnel, a lot of different things going on. I actually have a link in the next slide that shows how they monitor the math product, the math progress, which we'll look at here in just a moment. Not quite yet. I think I'm gonna do a couple other things first. But some, here are some of the action steps to address the needs of students earning Ds and Fs. Since attendance and motivation are leading to many of these Ds and Fs, Medea created a Get It Done Club, and they just created that this quarter, for completing work. So the Get It Done Club, the counselors bring in the students who are not completing the membean, Alex, or other assignments on Fridays at lunch, and they work on completing it with the support of those counselors in that room. We're also adding additional mental health services. There's a lot of collaboration between, obviously, the academic counselors, our new Wellness Center counselors, and site administration to support struggling students and come up with some new creative ways to work with them. We have had some real mental health issues in seventh grade this year. We were having some conversations, the highest number ever of students being hospitalized for suicidal ideations, self-harm. So we are working with Wellness Center counselors and outside support providers as well to try and really support these students and provide wraparound services. But it's very difficult to do well in your classes when you have such, you know, glaring mental health needs and concerns. So those suicide risk self-assessments have been way up. There were only one, one of those was made in quarter one and we had nine in quarter two alone, just at Medea, which is a huge number and a big increase from quarter one to quarter two. Here's sort of a list of some of the things that are happening. I shared a little bit about this already. I'd like to draw your attention to a couple of things. We are doing a remedial summer school for middle school and the list has been created and they're working with, with teachers to identify the students who will be invited to attend. It'll be an invitation-only summer school for those really needing that additional scoop of support during this summer. I also wanted to click on this little math progress monitoring worksheet here. So this is something that the, the math department completes along with the counselors that helps, that helps track and monitor progress for students specifically in the area of mathematics. Mathematics is definitely an area where we see some of the higher numbers of Ds and Fs, both in middle school and high school. And so this is a, a resource. There it is. I don't know if you can, I have the wrong glasses on to even see what it says on the side. But you can see there's a list of, you have the different quarters across the top. You can, the class grades go in there, their work habits, FastBridge results, because we are giving FastBridge at the middle school as well. And then, and that's a screener, in case those of you had forgotten about that. It's the same screener we use in elementary for the MTSS interventions. And then if you scroll down a little bit, Rogany, you can see suggestions, comments, things that have been done and that they've, things that have happened for this particular student to support them, because different things are done for different students depending on their need and the particular reason why they're struggling. But this is just for math alone. So you can see that there's a pretty comprehensive system in place to support our students. And it's well articulated and there are multiple people that are involved with keeping track and monitoring this progress on our students that are struggling. So this is just an example of this sheet that you use in math, but I thought you might be interested in seeing that. Again, we're addressing chronic absenteeism. I know Brad had mentioned that earlier. Attendance is a huge issue. And we've, although Oak Park is doing much better than most districts post-pandemic, we still have not reached our pre-pandemic attendance rates, which is challenging. If a student isn't here, they're not able to hear the instruction and it does really impact their overall success in a class. So we've been having those SART meetings, phone calls, letter home, student study team, et cetera. You know, each student is an individual, so their reasons for not being successful in a class are different. And so different interventions have to be in place to support each one. All right, Oak Park High School. Okay, we have some Oak Park High School friends here as well. I know, oh, Natalie left before her birthday. Before we get to saying, okay, so it's Natalie's birthday. So, I mean, can you think of a better place to spend your birthday than at a board meeting in the rain? But she finally did have to call it a night. But she helped collect all this, this data, so I wanted to recognize her and then Matt and Jason as well. They do a great job at the high school and I appreciate their support here. So, thank you for being here. So here is the semester one DNF list analysis. So again, you can see we're comparing semester one from 202122 school year to semester one this year. You can see, again, we have fewer students. Again, that speaks to declining enrollment. So you have overall fewer marks, just FYI as you're looking at that. All right. As a reminder, the numbers shown on this slide count a student as many times as the number of Ds and Fs they earned. For example, if they got two Ds and one F, they're counted three times, right? So this is the, looking at the total number of marks, the total number of Ds and Fs that were earned. So this is their 265 total earned, which makes up 2.95% of all marks. And the good news is, is that is down from last year because last year at this time, we were at 3.1% for all Ds and Fs. So that's great news. And this next slide here has your, your grade levels broken out by the number of total marks and the percent of students receiving the DNF marks. So you can see the highest number of Ds and Fs at the 11th grade with the 16.3% and the lowest, thank goodness, at 12th grade, because if you fail in 12th grade, it's very difficult to remediate that and then you're in danger of not graduating. So we definitely want to see the lowest numbers there. So you can see that we had the 11.5% of students earned at least one D or F in semester one. And that is a decrease, quite a substantial decrease, because last year at this time, we had 14.4% of Oak Park High School students who earned one D or F. So that's good news as well. Moving on to our next graph, we have, I want to, I want to draw your attention to the X axis here. Okay? And you see the numbers going up, the X axis. They're not going to 100, they're going to 10. All right? Because if I went to 100, you couldn't even see what we have going on here. So I want to point out that, again, these are really low numbers and we're really happy to see this. I know Ellen Chevalier is on a WASC team going to a high school in our area and she was looking at their WASC and they're dealing with numbers, well over 50% of students receiving at least one D R F. So these are really great numbers. We are really proud of these numbers. Do we have work to do still? Absolutely. But these are still really low numbers when you consider that in order to even make them visible to you guys, I had to adjust the X axis to 10% because otherwise you just couldn't even see the difference between them. So that's, that's a good problem to have to adjust the X axis, I would think. So the Ds and Fs have gone down or remained constant compared to last year. You can see the dark blue bar in the middle, except for a very slight increase in ninth grade Fs and a notable increase in 11th grade Fs. Everything else has gone down. Three-year decrease in 12th graders earning Ds and Fs, which is great news since doing Three-year decrease in 12th graders earning Ds and Fs, which is great news since doing poorly in 12th grade can lead to risks of not graduating. So you can see those, those numbers there. All right. Next graph is a comparison of students with multiple Ds and Fs. So you see the majority of the students that are being represented in this presentation are receiving one D or F. Okay, you can see the majority of them are here. But this slide, you will see the three-year comparison of students with multiple Ds and Fs. Overall, there are fewer students with multiple Ds or Fs, except for a couple of small increases in four and five Ds and Fs. It's good news. It means fewer students need remedial courses. Will have to remediate courses during summer school, et cetera. So we're pleased to see this trend. It's sort of noted in orange with the, with the decrease in those numbers. Our next slide is the data sorted by student population. So here, we have some work to do, similar to what we saw with Media. Our student groups, the bars aren't equal like we'd like to see them. So where our students on IEPs make up 4.5% of our student population, they make up 19.5% of the Ds and Fs. So we'd really want to see that bar down there at 4.5% if we're looking at equity there. Same thing, we'd go for the five oh fours. You can see the discrepancy, English learner or multilingual learners and low socioeconomic status. On our next slide, we have DNFs by student ethnicity for fall. You can see the percent of Ds and Fs earned by the different Oak Park High School ethnicities. As with Media Creek Middle School, Hispanic students earn a disproportionate number of Ds and Fs, making up 11.6 of the student body, but 21.9% of the overall Ds and Fs. Also notable is the over-representation of both black students, 2.2% of the student body, and 3.0 of the Ds and Fs, and white students, 55.2% of the student body, and 59.2 of the Ds and Fs. So again, we'd like to see these bars equal. All right. Moving on to Oak Park action steps. So Oak Park High School is going to be sharing this information with their departments for further discussion. They're going to continue to offer their new office hours, which they started this year, which during time, they're doing individual and small group tutoring. They have office hours available in all subject areas right now. And that's been a fantastic addition, I believe. One-on-one counseling support, student study team meetings, parent meetings, the Math Honor Society, which is a peer tutoring program, is in place. We're working on summer school for this summer, specifically for remediation. That summer school will happen here in Oak Park, so we can help our students and make sure that they have a smooth transition and get the courses that they need to remediate, so they can either remediate a grade that was like a D, so they can go to a UCCSU or, you know, a school that's going to require that completion of in an A to G course, or so that they can remediate a course that they received an F in, so that they can graduate. So we'll be offering that again this summer. We have our lists already created with our students that need that support. Of course, we're intervening now because we don't want them to fall any farther behind. We don't want them to end up with a, you know, a D or an F second semester as well, because then you have to make up two semesters instead of just one. So we want to sort of mitigate and, you know, that, that learning loss along the way. So these are some of the things that we're doing and we've, we've talked about doing. I have principals here as well, but I didn't want to necessarily call them out. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, but this is your quarter two semester one DNF data for this school year. Questions, Doc?
Let me think. First, thank you very much.
Welcome.
I know that we just started looking at this data more critically in the last couple of years. And I, I think it, even though the numbers are low, it's a testament to our commitment to all of our students, especially our most vulnerable students, that we're doing this. And I also want to speak to the fact that we're complying with our equity policy by looking at these, this data based on student demographics.
Absolutely.
And that's really important for us to be doing, so that when we are going through the LCAP, the budget process and making decisions, we have, we're able to access this. And so I do appreciate the time. I guess the only, the only, I had something in my head and it flew out. But just that, that I think we've seen some, we saw this last year, and there are the same student groups are overrepresented. And so not that that's, you know, I understand that we can't fix, you know, something necessarily in one year or somehow equalize, you know, everything. But just looking at that, like, when we do the LCAP, when we're going through things, if there are specific programs or needs, you know, that we can target to those groups more specifically that we aren't doing.
Right.
To everybody, and I know there's the issue with the low socioeconomic students that they can't be identified. But even given that, I was just, that would be something I would be interested in, in hearing or knowing about. So, you know, if, if there's tons or things that are attendant to that, who would be able to make that decision and be able to provide that support to the site?
Well, I think to your point, that many of these students are overlapping. So if you have a student who's Hispanic, they may also be a multilingual learner, and they may also be low income. They could also be a student that's on an IEP. And frequently, you'll see that, you'll see students are in multiple categories. So when you're helping one student or when you're offering, let's say, this designated ELD class to really help them with their language acquisition, you're doing a lot of different things, because you're not just helping the student who's a multilingual learner. You're also potentially helping someone who's socioeconomically disadvantaged and someone who may be on a five oh four plan or an IEP. So there definitely is overlap within these groups. So any services that we can provide to one of these groups, I think, has a trickle-down effect, because it ends up affecting students positively from multiple groups. I don't know if that makes any sense, but
No, it does. Yeah, thank you.
I think that there's a lot of crossover. And our admin can look at our socioeconomic status students. It's just that we can't widely put out lists of that for teachers. That kind of thing can't happen. But we do know, you know, our counselors can know that information, and so we do track those students.
As a former high school principal and a former middle school principal, there's things that come to my mind right away. And with middle school, pre-pandemic, for decades and decades and decades, the biggest issue to me has always been, it's a really difficult age, really hard for kids. And we all can remember back to middle school. We didn't, we're trying to figure out who we are, who we fit in with, this, that, and the other. And sometimes, school just isn't right there. But three weeks later, it'll be right there. And, you know, this friend is my best friend today, they're not my best friend the next day. This person I ever spoke to obviously became my best friend, and now I'm all excited. So now I'm going to get all excited and focus more on school, because they're more academically oriented and things like that. So, you know, having been that middle school principal, I mean, I completely understand. And I think Oregon is, universal strategies or skills are the key, along with what you said, Mrs. Herzog, about the, you know, potential approval of the ELD class tonight. You know, organizational skills are so critical, and at the middle school level, they affect your grade. They're really important, you know, whether it's that organizational binder, that homework not being completed, even though the teacher's given you 373 reminders in the last two weeks to get your homework done and stuff like that. All these other factors come into play, and they are extremely low numbers. But some of those universal things, like the organization, you know, the agenda binders, like, all those things, that's middle school. High school is hard. It's hard. There's, there's really, really difficult classes. We have high expectations at Oak Park High School. We have tons of supports, whether it be counseling, the tutoring that Mr. McLennahan has brought on. The teachers have graciously, like Mr. Peters stepped up and are taking on, along with several of your colleagues. Much appreciation for that. That is something critical that these kids really need, and we really appreciate that. The Math Honor Society, huge. APC, Advanced Per count, is huge. So there's all these things, at the end of the day, to see the numbers so low is, they're low. But what you said, Mrs. Herzog, might be a key to the whole thing, is once we have more structured things, like a structured, again, I'm not on the board, I don't approve, but, you know, structured ELD courses, things like that, and they all tie together, it, it quite possibly could take care of a lot of this. And we could see, over the next three years, these numbers get cut in half. And I'm saying in a good way, negative coming down. Because without structured English language development for an English language learner, it doesn't matter what your native or primary language is, without that, it's really hard to access the materials and access the curriculum. It's really, really difficult. And some of these children are, you know, they're, well, they all are getting, you know, they're getting push-in, they're getting sort of quasi-immersion, English language immersion type of help with instructional aids and things like that. And that's great, but it's not the same as a structured daily ELD class. I think that's really important. In terms of socioeconomics and things like that, that's a real heavy lift. That's really, really difficult by, because we don't know who these children are. You know, we don't know what little category is put up on the board, we don't know where they are. But if these other systems of support, you know, we talk about MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, these other systems of support continue, and they build, and we have more people willing to do the tutoring and more people willing to do this, I think you're seeing the things that are happening are having an effect. The last thing I'll say is, again, we're still, and I said this when we went through the pandemic, this is a three-to-five-year heavy lift for these poor, poor students. I mean, I feel, I mean, I don't mean poor students, I mean, I calling them, I feel so bad for them. I feel so bad for our students and every student in the country that had to go through this and had to experience school on a computer and didn't have that amazing interaction with that teacher right there, and where the teacher could read the student and the student could read the teacher, and they could work with kids instead of in a breakout room on the computer. I mean, we did the best we could, and our teachers rocked it, probably better than most. But man, there's a lot of factors in this. There's a lot, and these are not excuses, because we absolutely can do better. But man, there are reasons. They really are, and, and we're doing the best we can. Our teachers rock it every day, our instructional assistants rock it every day, they do the best they can. But they're, it's been an uphill battle. But again, I think you're going to see Oak Park Unified TK to 12 will come out on top at the end of the day. They really will.
I believe that to be true as well. All right, we're going to move on, because Oak Park is special in a lot of ways. One of the other ways that we're very special is in our sustainability initiatives. And we were the first ever California green ribbon school. And we have some really neat sustainability practices in place, and so I wanted to highlight those tonight.
I'm sorry, before we move on, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit slow tonight. I need to go back to the DNF list really quickly.
Okay.
So I know that we have, there's been a lot of great work in this, and I appreciate the transparency and the tracking. But, you know, one of the things that we've done this year is there's been a lot of new supports added and also interventions. So, you know, for us as a board, one of the things that's important is to kind of gauge the efficacy of some of these intervention measures. So it'd be nice to have some sort of objective measures to see how well we're doing, how effective these are. So again, and kind of going back to, I think, the LCAP, which Trustee Helsley had mentioned, we know where to target our resources, right? We're very limited on our resources, and it'd be nice to kind of hone in and see what effective strategies are helping these students. I mean, yes, we have ELD students, but they're, it's a pretty small number, right? So that's, that's the first thing I want to say. The second thing is, I didn't see the data across subjects as well, but I'm assuming that the sites are also looking, taking a little bit of more of a granular dive in looking at where these grades are by subject. And then also, are we also looking at just the general academic trajectory of that student? So, you know, to know whether or not it's like a recent occurrence versus looking at their academic history, maybe something more of an objective measure, like their CASP scores in the past in elementary and middle to see what is happening? So I'm just wondering if that is also being
Definitely. I mean, anytime we, anybody pulls up admin or counselor or teacher pulls up the kid in queue, they can see the whole academic history. So you can see the trajectory since kindergarten or TK, whenever their first enrollment date was with us. So you can track, it has their longitudinal, their CASP scores. If they're an English learner, it would have their LCAP scores, it has their grades, it has their
Right. I was just curious to see if there's an articulated process, right?
Their behavior records.
Okay.
Their visits to the counselors, SSTs, all that kind of thing are, it's all documented really easily.
Yeah, I've been in queue, so my question, I guess, was just whether or not there's an articulated process of what data to look at. I know our staff are all educational experts, but I just didn't know if there was a particular
You know, I did show you the, the tracking form. We have a lot of similar types of tracking forms like that, where we're monitoring students for certain things. This particular one was mathematics, because we do, that seems to be the area that most kids struggle with, if they're going to struggle in an area. So it makes a lot of sense to have that. But they have tracking sheets.
And math makes sense, especially after COVID, right?
So we have multiple different ways that we're tracking students and monitoring progress like that.
And one tangible, one, whoa, wait, far away. One tangible example is Ms. Herzog, Ms. Chevalier, and the middle school administration. We were looking at students that were the cuspy kids, whether they get in or not get into algebra as eighth graders. And so there were X amount of kids that were being looked at. You know, 99% of them were allowed to take the algebra. And we looked at their grades, what they're getting, their latest grades, what they're getting. And then we went back and we had OSEA, our student data specialist, pull their CASP scores. And there is a correlation. It, it shows these students should be doing well, because their CASP, every single one of those kids that's doing well. And when I say, I mean Bs and As, and then a very small group doing Cs. Most of them are Bs and As in algebra in eighth grade, and their CASP scores were all met or exceeded. So that, I'm glad you brought that up, Trustee Wayne, because that, that, that was a really, really interesting data dive to see that, that they are, you know, the CASP is a criterion reference test. It's based on the standards. So in seventh grade, they met or exceeded the standards of mathematics in seventh grade. Now, as eighth graders, they're doing the same thing, at least in terms of a grade that they are earning in a teacher's classroom. And again, it'll be interesting next fall to look back and see what their eighth grade CASP scores are, to see if there's an alignment and congruence there. But in this one case, I, you know, I can say that there was an alignment, there was a congruence to that. So that made us feel good, that the, the right decisions were made, and, you know, the students were allowed to challenge themselves, and they're stepping up to the plate, and they're doing a fantastic job. Teacher's doing a great job teaching them, you know, the whole thing. But yeah, I agree, you know, more of that is definitely something we can absolutely do.
Well, thank you for looking at that data. So just to clarify, by CUSP kids, you're, you're referring to students who may not have been automatically placed in that grade because they failed to meet one of the criteria.
That's correct.
And they're doing fine.
Eighth grade algebra course.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Green initiatives?
Okay, so
Back to Ds and Fs.
Wait, I just want to be clear. So did you want something to come back, or would just be something?
I think for the next presentation or going forward, I think it would just be nice to have some gauge, and that's up to staff. I don't know a lot about these interventions specifically, but just to see that there's some sort of evaluation, I guess, of what's being used in gauging efficacy on the numbers and maybe tracking these students over time to see if they're working, I think is really kind of what we're looking for, right? So data and outcomes, and if it's not working, if there's something else that we can be doing better or better way to, you know, utilize our resources.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. I would agree with Doc, that's a great suggestion.
Sure.
Okay, so now we're moving on to 4 dot 12, report on the sustainability initiatives in the Green Schools Conference.
Fantastic. Okay, so our first slide here is actually from the Green Schools National Network. So last month, Adam Rowch and Alex Glass, who's a teacher at Oak Hills, and myself and Ellen Chevalier went to the National Green Schools Network Conference in New Orleans. And we had a fantastic time, we learned a lot, and we made a lot of good connections with people from around the country. It was very interesting. Our very first activity we did was to, they had the corners of the room, and they, they set it up like a map. And they said, you know, if you're in the East Coast, go here. So you kind of like set up the room, and you and you could see that most of the participants were from like the coastal states, right? There were a few from the the Midwest and, you know, the South, but it was very eye opening. I guess it wasn't altogether surprising, but it was a very interesting, um, activity, I thought, to just kind of gauge who was actually in attendance, um, at the conference. Uh, so that was just a fun activity. Um, so while we were there, we looked at four key, four key systems that drive holistic transformation in schools, um, including leadership, uh, curriculum instruction, culture and climate, and then, um, facilities and operations. So they had those of us who were there looking at, um, curriculum and instruction and culture and climate, um, going through one group of sessions and activities, and then they had the facilities, um, folks going in business going through another set of sessions. So they had it broken out, um, because the 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 information that they were sharing was specific to those groups. And so it was advised that you have a team, um, and it definitely was advantageous to have, you know, Adam be able to attend the business and, um, facilities and operations sessions while we attended the curriculum, um, sessions and then be able to come back together as a team. Within each impact system, there are spheres of influence, and I have those included here, um, on our graphic here. They're health, equity and sustainability. Um, we spent quite a bit of time looking at a case study of post Katrina, um, reimagining New Orleans schools through this lens, through the health, equity and sustainability lens. I think maybe when I came here to Oak Park, my original thought was green. You're looking at recycling and things that are good for the earth. Um, but really, the National Green Schools Network is so much more than that because it's based on the UN sustainability goals. Um, and so this was good for me because I got to see, um, like the health and the equity, um, part of the framework come through and 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 have some discussions about, you know, how important that is. So that was a big focus of the conference. Um, before Hurricane Katrina had hit, New Orleans had some of the worst performing schools in the nation, um, really, really low performing. And so after the hurricane hit, there was almost no schools left. Everything was was flooded, people had moved out. And so what they started doing is they started opening charter schools. They just disbanded the entire, um, district as a whole. Um, and there were only 11 or 12 actual district run schools even to this day that are left. Um, the rest are all charter schools. And so what we did is we went and we visited some of these different charter schools. Um, so I, um, I went with, um, Alex Glass, and we went to the Willow School. You could maybe see us over there standing on the steps. Um, but this was very informative for me. I have never been to a school, um, in another state and been able to see it through the lens of, um, an administrator and former teacher and a parent. Um, very interesting. But this one here was located in a very affluent neighborhood. It's in the Garden District, um, if you're familiar with that, um, or the area of New Orleans. Um, and this school actually had, um, a test. You had to take a test to be admitted, um, an aptitude test. Um, so it was exclusive. Um, and then we, when we came back to meet, we talked about the equity issues um, surrounding a a test, um, sort of a format to be admitted to a school. Um, and it was an arts integration and STEM focus. We could choose from a variety of different schools to go visit. I chose this one because it was our highest performing school. And I thought since Oak Park is a very high performing district, I wanted to see a high performing district in another state and and what was going on there. You can see the students outside working. Um, I thought this slide was was just fantastic, but it, because it says the 39th Annual Crawfish Boil, right? I mean, how authentic is that to see a marquee? Um, I thought it was just too fantastic. I had to take a picture. So one of the things that I really enjoyed about this particular school site was their schedule setup. They had, um, an eight period, um, eight periods. Um, the kids could take four electives. Um, and they had an A day and a B day, and they had four classes on one day and four classes on the other day. And then if they were someone who was studying the arts and they had a special, um, they had a special focus or STEM and a special focus, then one of their classes would go all every day, and then the other ones would rotate. It was very interesting and unique, but it gave the students a lot of opportunity to take a variety of classes. They, I mean, it it reminded me of Fame, and I know I'm dating myself, but I used to love watching Fame. And it was like a performing arts school, and the the kids would go and they'd have dance class and music class, and we had all kinds of of different opportunities. And it was like that you walked by one room, and there was ballet happening, and you walked by another room, and there was, you know, brass quintets playing, and then they had a great STEM setup, um, you know, for kids that were looking at STEM. And ironically, you didn't have to try out. You didn't have to have a talent to come to the school. You just had to be smart. You had to pass this assessment. So it was interesting that like it had nothing to do really with your, um, artistic talents, and they didn't audition for the school. It was just you had to pass this test when you were in kindergarten. So when we came back from this session, we kind of talked about that school site and how it, um, was it equitable, um, to do that? So I see the wrong is moving me along. Okay, here I go. Okay, the Living School in New Orleans was another school that we visited. Um, this was, uh, on the east side of town, a much lower income area, actually in a strip mall. So this one was interesting as well. It had a very strong environmental focus. It's flooding, flooding somewhere. Um, they had signs that said, fresh food is liberation. Um, they tried to bury us, but they didn't know we were, um, seeds, really, um, thought provoking, um, signs about. Uh, they had a lending library, but also a food right next to their lending little lending library. They had food and, um, should we go somewhere?
Do we want to just take a break for a minute?
Is it a, is it a watch, a warning or an alert?
Can we just take a a three minute break? Because I, um, Aaron's in, I'm gonna turn my phone on. So, okay, we're going to take a three minute recess, five minute recess.
I don't know.
I don't know, it's pretty still out there, but. That's usually the three. It gets really quiet, it's really still, and then, rrrr, so.
Won't that be really fun? It was, it was totally amazing, like the, it's just, it's surreal. Yeah, have you been there before?
Yeah, my business partner, and again, her son Michael Park.
Oh, okay.
He's Mel's dad, right?
Oh.
And went to, uh, Loyola.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Loyola, and she went to Tulane for Master General, or any of them somewhere else. Hopefully PhD or UCLA, which is deep Louisiana.
Uh-huh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we go see her family down there. It's a different planet.
Yeah, no, I mean, it was, it was just like you said, different planet, different place. And like the history, like the buildings, like that school that I went to was gorgeous, you know, it's just all brick. And like, we just don't have that kind of, you know, age to our buildings here.
I was a graduating class in high school, so I knew a little bit of age.
Yeah. I'm ready.
Talking Louisiana.
Louisiana, Cajun cookies, crawfish. Okay, here we go. All right.
I'm, we're gonna, we're, we're coming back. Oh, can I, can I talk?
Ah, that's true. And Katrina. All right, moving on really quickly, we'll go to the next slide to the conference takeaways. Um, expanded definition of green to include sustainability systems of health and equity.
Is it okay, we can just start? Okay, I didn't know if I had to do something. Okay, sorry, Tammy, I'm sorry.
I'm ready to forge ahead here. We also had some networking opportunities with the container classrooms that I'm going to share with you in just a second. OPSD, next steps, um, sorting trash with with students along with, um, the food services, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. Revisiting the climate of care, that's sort of our health equity, um, measure or or program. So we want to make sure that we're really paying some attention to that. Um, challenge success. We have a lot of new staff, myself included, that has not been trained in challenge success. So looking at that health equity lens to go along with our sustainability issue, uh, initiatives, it's really important to include those. Um, and then equity and access to rigorous courses, something that we talk about all the time, but it actually has a correlation and tie in here as well. Adam and I, um, are going to be, um, working with Jeff Rivero. He is the UN ambassador. Um, and he is working on a a container classrooms for, um, natural disasters. So we have some container classrooms here that he was very interested in, so he's planning to come out for a visit. Um, he would like to propose a, um, a project where they, uh, stockpile some container classrooms that are ready to go in case of emergencies like Katrina, like the wildfires up here, um, and or tornadoes. Um, or he specifically referenced the Paradise Fires and Puerto Rico hurricanes. Um, but he's going to be, um, presenting his proposal about the container classrooms to Secretary, Secretary Cardona um, to be included in his climate adaptation plan. So it's pretty cool. I mean, we made some neat connections there, and being able to be a part of a larger initiative like this and be models for that, I think is pretty neat. So that was something else that we took away from this, and, um, we'll be meeting with Jeff Rivero, um, shortly. Um, waste management, um, kitchen staff is separating our food and prep waste. That is going into the green bins, just like we would do, um, at your home. Um, so that is something that is, um, currently in process. Uh, the students are not sorting their lunches right now. Um, that is something that we're still looking at the logistics of. Um, but it is definitely something we've been in discussion about. Composting is not something that we're doing.
I'm sorry, can I just stop you?
Yeah.
They're not even sorting their lunches at the elementary schools?
Not that I'm aware of. I talked with, um, I am actually meeting with Catherine next week, but not, not on a full scale.
Okay.
Unless, unless you've seen that, I.
Yeah, my, and so.
I don't think they're doing that.
Why that would stop, that was pretty creepy, you know?
I think things, yeah. I also think that they're they're cooking slightly differently now, and things are just a little bit different because we're feeding everyone. And so they do not have the ability to, um, to do things quite to the level that they used to. They're still making, you know, the homemade food and everything like that, but there are more packaged items. Okay. That's a little disconcerting. That sounds like a lot of rain. Wow. That sounds like wind and rain. And we're struggling with composting efforts because of the critters. So Deb and I have been talking about ways to deal with composting, but it, we, every time we try, she said that they've they've been having massive issues with critters. Um, and so it's like a double edged sword. Um, so that has not been happening except for with the green bins. Bytest. Okay, the EAC recycling event, going through here real quick, February 25th, we had our fantastic president of the Board of Education, trustee Helstine was there. She was helping the cars as they came in in the rain and letting people know, yes, you only have to go this way because you only have shredding and a bicycle. But no, you have a whole car full of stuff. You have to go this way and around the circle and get in line. Um, so we were very lucky to have our our Futures Club students out there. We had, um, some of our Garden Club students. Um, I was there, Mr. Mc, uh, um, Mr. Callahan did a wonderful job coordinating it with waste management, um, and Kiwanis. And we had a really fun, very wet, it was very similar to this kind of a day. Hail, I mean, my car was covered in hail. We were getting pelted from the sides. It was quite an adventurous day, but you can see our loot. We collected lots of good stuff. If you go into the next slide, you can see our shredding machine there. I think that's Denise right there next to it. Um, and then look at all the bicycles we collected for Kiwanis, um, and a lot of e-waste. Next year, we're going to want two, um, containers for e-waste. We ran out of space and had to turn people away with e-waste. We didn't realize that it was going to be quite so much. So it's quite so many, um, people bringing that in, um, 12 pallets, in fact, of just e-waste. So very successful, um, event, uh, and a lot of fun, um, despite the craziness. Sites, sustainability activities, just a few things that are happening here in Oak Park. We have a a big focus on outdoor instruction, walking field trips to explore dedicated open space around us, um, local hikes, Santa Cruz Island field trips, um, the Pally camp. We had all of our middle schoolers be able to go there this year that missed out on that because of the pandemic, which was fantastic. Um, we have the very dynamic group, the Our Futures Club at, um, OPHS, um, and the Gardening Club, um, at Oakview. And then something super exciting that's on the horizon for us is this connection with the Wallace-Annenberg Wildlife Crossing Bridge. I've made a connection with, um, a group that's that's doing some educational activities around this. It's going to be right here, um, right by us. It's like the first in the nation. Um, and so it's very exciting for us to be able to participate and and work with our students. Um, I actually sent some lessons out to the school sites, um, to the principals so that we can start having some dialogue about this this wildlife crossing that's going to be coming our way.
All right, moving on. And Tammy, I just wanted to remind everyone as well as our staff, I think, um, now that everyone's, you know, uh, kind of getting back out, and actually, this was even more important during the pandemic when we were all kind of locked in, is that, um, the National Park Service has, um, uh, for the fourth graders, I don't know if you're aware of this program, but they get free passes or free entrance to all the national, yeah. And, um, I believe last year, they might have even extended it to the fifth graders, but I just feel like even if we're not organizing something, um, within the our fourth grade classes, it's something that our teachers, um, and staff can promote with our fourth grade families um, to encourage that sort of outdoor education, even outside the classroom and taking advantage of of that free pass. It's a, it's a great program.
I don't know if all those teachers do, but my, um, son's fourth grade teacher promoted it. So I need to give a shout out to Mrs. Farlow.
All right, moving on to our next slide, um, we have a fantastic opportunity for our students, um, at the high school to get a green cord. So students who complete the following courses in 12th grade are eligible for that green cord recognition at graduation. There's an environmental and sustainability literature course, geopolitic geopolitics and the world today, and then environmental science CP or AP. Um, last year was the first year we, um, actually implemented it and had students go. Last year was the first year we actually implemented it and had students go through, and we had 12 students that received that cord. I know at Future Freshman Night, they did a great job of advertising the program and talking it up to our students so that we can have as many students as possible participate, because it's quite an honor. Gardening program highlights, so we contract with Deborah Lath, she is our gardening guru expert, and she works with all of our students, preschool all the way through fifth grade, and then she also works with students at Medea and both of our high schools. So she's got a bunch of neat projects, I'm going to let you kind of go through and read those, but from the worm planting going on with the, the little guys, all the way up to some of the kale and the seeding and the transplanting that they're doing up at Park High School. I did want to let you know about the Jungle Lo project. A Jungle Lo is like a room that's maybe good for mental health. You get lots of good vibes from being around green plants, there's some research that shows that being in an environment with lots of fellow green things is soothing and good for you, and you can perform better in an environment like that. And so Alex Glass, who's the teacher who went with us to the green conference, has volunteered to have her room be the first Jungle Lo in Oak Park. And so they're going to deck out her classroom with all kinds of plant matter and make it green and turn it into a Jungle Lo, so we can have a little pilot and see if we like this Jungle Lo idea. So something on the horizon for us. All right, moving on, we have our Ventura County Resource Conservation District Monarch Butterfly Habitat Restoration Grant. So we're working through that as well. We've been discussing this at our EAC meetings, they just got another section of cardboard laid down here on the corner, I don't know where I'm pointing, that corner. So they're smothering the grass and the weeds, that's the most environmentally friendly way to get rid of weeds, apparently. I hadn't realized that, but you lay down the cardboard and then you put the woodchips on top of it, and then it turns into mulch. You smother the weeds, you have really fertile ground, and then you're ready to plant. So that's the process, it's a lengthy process, it might be quicker to go out there with a weed whacker and some poison, but we don't do that, we are doing it the correct environmentally friendly way. So it's been a little bit of a lengthy process trying to get those areas ready to, to plant the plants for the habitat restoration. But we also are working with Deb Behringer, she's a restoration ecologist, and then Andrew Spiker, he's the district resource conservationist to implement this grant, and they've been in attendance at some of our EAC meetings as well. Questions? To the questions slide. Thoughts, ideas, questions?
There were some questions in the, that were asked ahead of the meeting just about revisiting some of our compliance with the board policies in the years, and I just wanted to, you know, mention that, that we could add that to our list to follow up. And also, I just wanted to thank you all for going to the conference and for bringing back this information. I'd also like to just know a little bit more about that, the lunches and, and how, whether we, you know, if, if it's a simple fix, it's probably not, but just wondering about, about.
I'm meeting with Catherine next week, when I meet with her, I'll ask. I don't know a ton about child nutrition services, I'm learning as I go. So from what I had heard, I thought we weren't doing any of the sorting, that it was just the, our employees who are doing the food prep that are doing the sorting. So that was what I, what I had understood, but I will definitely check in with her and we'll have a conversation, and Adam as well.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
And just in the context of that, I know a lot has changed since we formed a lot of these ARs related to the BP's for the 3511 section. So are there recommendations to kind of tailor to our current situation with the increased volume of food waste too?
And we may need to, it's, it's, it looks like their state is going to be, I think, again, giving the lunches for free next year, is that correct? I think that's what I've heard, and I think that's really, that's the deciding factor. So, you know, it's one of those things where we didn't realize it was going to carry on so long. So like you said, maybe it's time to revise a board policy if that isn't going to be something that's going to be happening for the long term. We figured at first it was just going to be through the end of the year, school year, then it was going to be through the end of 2020, and then it was going to be through the end of the 2021 school year. And now it's still here, so you almost wonder, is California ever going to be able to pull this back now that we've been providing these free meals for everybody, people have come to expect that? So like you said, it may be time then to look at revising some of these. So definitely take a look at that.
Thank you so much. Okay, so now we're moving on to item five, business session consent agenda, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we're going on, I, I think you have to come back, Tammy. We're going on to item six, educational services, item six one, approve new health course at Medea Creek Middle School.
Somehow the agenda made it look like there was more time. All right. I actually have Maureen O'Hagan here, she stopped by from Medea Creek, and I believe she has some information and context regarding why Medea decided to add this health class. So I wanted to have her speak first before I, I speak.
Since you waited all this time for a tornado warning. A tornado warning, so exciting. Hello, my name is Maureen O'Hagan, I have been teaching seventh grade science at Medea Creek for the last eight years. And I came tonight thinking I'd be submitting a public comment and had a perfectly timed three-minute little public comment. But here we go, a little more free form. Just wanted to give you some historical context for why we are asking for the health class to be added to the seventh grade curriculum for Medea. And it was something that was asked for jointly by the Science Department and the PE Department. In our Science Department at Medea, we pride ourselves on delivering rigorous lessons that challenge our students in fun and exciting ways. Our NGSS curriculum got, helped get Medea the California Distinguished Schools Award in 2019, and we are constantly top performing in the California State Stan, uh, Test for Science, the CAST. And because of that, our teachers are very dedicated to making sure every single day we are teaching and covering science standards. We really don't have a whole lot of wiggle, wiggle room in the curriculum to go off topic if we're going to try and hit everything that keeps us as a top performing school. Historically speaking, pre-COVID for sure, in seventh grade, the science teachers only spent one day, double block period, so kind of two 45-minute classes, one double block, covering the required HIV lessons. We would also spend one day talking about anti-smoking, don't do drugs, vaping bad. And that's it, literally two days out of our school year would be spent kind of covering those specific health topics. With the passing of the California Healthy Youth Act now required by law, in seventh grade, there needs to be a comprehensive sexual health education lesson. And the program that OPUSD is looking to adopt, the Positive Prevention Plus, that curriculum packaged consists of about 13 45-minute-long lessons to cover all of those requirements for the California Healthy Youth Act. Additionally, our district has received money for a grant, the Toupe Grant, to, for us to cover comprehensive anti-smoking and anti-drug lessons. That kind of prepackaged program is 11 45-minute classes. And we were asked to kind of teach all of this this year, and we're like, whoa, Science Department, we can't give up 24 classes of our science standards to cover this. So then the PE department was approached, okay, well, what can you guys cover? And we'll kind of divvy it up between the two. But the Physical Education Department has their own standards they have to cover. And additionally, they don't really have access to indoor classroom teaching spaces to appropriately deliver all of these. And just a little side note, not all of these teachers, PE and health, excuse me, PE and science are really that comfortable with the idea of teaching upwards of 13 sexual health classes. That's not what they signed up for when they became PE teachers or biology teachers or whatnot. So we kind of banded together and went to our wonderful administrators and said, hey, maybe this is the time to start a health class. So we actually approached our administration in the hopes of being able to set up a health class. As been discussed here tonight in almost every presentation, since the era of COVID, there has been just an amazing uptick in distressed students on campus. Stress levels are up, anxiety levels are up. It's, we're seeing in the classroom more and more disruptive behaviors, there's more bullying on campus. So many students are having mental health challenges. We're seeing a decrease in attention spans, coping skills, resilience in our students. The students we're teaching this year and last year are not the same students we taught pre-COVID. It's just much more challenging to keep everybody's attention and focused, and it's, it's been a struggle. So the idea of bringing in a semester-long health class to not only cover these kind of required sex and drug lessons, we could actually finally do due diligence and due justice to covering all of the required health standards that are actually supposed to be taught in school, and we do, but they're kind of piecemealed out to different departments and different teachers, and who knows how thoroughly they're actually covered. But by creating a dedicated semester-long class, we can get all the seventh graders in. And a health class isn't just family life and anti-drugs. It covers everything from mental, emotional, and social health, nutrition, injury prevention, personal and community health. Well-taught health classes will teach students skills they can use every day of their life that help them with their stress management, their anxiety levels, that gives them coping skills. We can talk about mental health and how to take care of yourself. There's lessons on healthy relationships, what constitutes a healthy relationship, to follow that up with communication skills and conflict resolution. Those sorts of classes should help bring down the bullying levels on campus, increase students' connections with each other. And then, of course, there's the nutrition classes, we can throw in things like time management and sleeping and hygiene and all these things that just kind of make for a better, well-rounded student. And having a class that is completely dedicated to teaching all of those, I think just really ties into the theme of this evening, which is we need to take care of the whole student, not just the academic side of the student. So I'm here to ask for your support for creating a semester-long seventh grade health class.
Woo, okay. All right, on May 8th, 2019, the California State Board of Education approved a new health framework including recommendations for teaching sexual health that aligns with the California Healthy Youth Act, the state's comprehensive sexual education law. The California Healthy Youth Act, which became law in 2016, was revised in 2019, and it requires schools to provide students with comprehensive sexual health education at least once in middle school and once in high school. Staffing changes, a changing climate, including increased student mental health needs post-pandemic, and the updated legislation led to discussions about how to best deliver the required health standards at the middle school level. Currently, OPUSD high, um, high school students receive these health standards in their ninth grade health class. After discussing this with educational partners at the middle school level, including students and parents through the school site council and PFA, and Medea staff during staff, department, leadership meetings, as well as the district curriculum council and health subcommittee, it was determined that adding a one semester health class in seventh grade would best meet the needs of Medea Creek students. Seventh grade students will still be able to take either a one semester elective or a year-long seventh grade elective, along with receiving health education, through a semester-long health course or an abridged 10-day health unit taught within their year-long elective. The one semester health class is a compromise solution to ensure health standards and legally required content is taught by balancing the needs of our music program with the increased need for physical and social emotional health education. This will be a one-year pilot, Medea staff will continue to evaluate the course, and they will look for ways to ensure all students have access to health curriculum. OPUS students will also receive this health class, and it will be taught by their regular OPUS teacher. Are there any questions?
Well, I, I was just going to say that, I mean, really more for the public, we, we had a previous special meeting where we did get, and I really wanted to thank, you know, Gia and Samantha and, you know, Juan, I just wanted to commend you guys for the very, I mean, you kind of abridged that, Tammy, but just getting all the dates and all the, you know, more than a dozen meetings, I think, and, and the input that you got. I think what was mentioned is that this is something that students have been asking for, kind of a life skills class that focuses on mental health, as well as, you know, friendships, communication, and, and then, you know, just the previous topics that we discussed at this board meeting, talking about, you know, it's kind of like Maslow's, Maslow's, you know, hierarchy of needs, right? Like, like we're talking about food, so let's get them fed and get, you know, food and shelter, but then right above that is safety and security, and, and more and more these days, it's, it's really about mental health. So, so I just, I just wanted to kind of reiterate those, those things that we did learn at the special meeting. And, you know, one, one concern that was raised was about a third of the, of the students who take the year-long electives, unfortunately, during this pilot year, won't have the benefit of getting the full class and the full curriculum, which I do think would be beneficial. And I just hope that we continue to explore avenues to make that available to all of our seventh graders in a way that does not degrade or compromise, you know, the, the music and the arts programs that we've got with the year-long electives.
Absolutely, that's definitely in our plans, we've, we've talked about it, continuing discussions about the possibility of a seven-period day is, is one way to accomplish that. Doing something through advisement is, is another way. So there are some creative solutions we can continue to look at, but for right now, this seemed like it was the best compromise moving forward. And we figured a pilot would, would be our best, our best avenue to try and meet the needs of, of everyone.
And I, I mean, I kind of also understand that this is a bit of a chicken or egg problem, because in order to design a very good health class, you need the credentialed health teacher. So, you know, while I think it would have been nice to have seen kind of more of a full, you know, you know, potential syllabus or curriculum, I also understand that we don't quite have the expertise yet.
Right.
In-house with that credential teacher, so, so what I'm understanding is that, you know, you guys are asking for approval to essentially hire that credential teacher.
Yes.
To pilot this program and to build upon that.
Yes, that's the plan, yes.
Oh, so, thank you for bringing it up, Swayon, about that we've had a, we had a special meeting last week to dive into some of the details, that kind of a little study session, I guess, if you will, on health, because it is a little bit, it is a shift for the way we do things in our district. And so I appreciate the time that everyone took to, to walk the board through that. And then from that, and, and my reading of the board, our board policies on comprehensive health ed and, and the California Healthy Youth Act came a lot more questions, and we've asked questions, and we've even, I've even had the opportunity to meet with Jeff and Tammy and talk a little bit more about some of my concerns about this. And I think it came from, I was really looking at the, the course approval template, and, and then, but we're talking about some different things. And so I feel it's really important that we, or at least we say here tonight, like reconcile some of it, because the first question I had, and I want everyone to understand, is that the, that we, the course, is it going to be a semester course taught to seventh graders and it, as an elective? But it's not really an elective because the, the students, students need to take it, or they're going to be required to take it if they're not selecting a year-long elective class. That was something that came out of our study session, I feel is important for everyone to understand. That's not totally clear from the template. And let me just say that I don't, I'm not implying that the template is done wrong or anything like that. I just think because of this subject.
You're absolutely right on that, yes.
It's a little complicated, and we're talking both about like our requirements and then just passing the class. I know we're here tonight just to approve the class, but I feel like it needs to be teased out a little bit in that way, so everyone is really clear. And then you just said in your remarks, when you, when you, in your remarks just a moment ago, that it's going to be not only for Medea students, but also for OPUS students.
Yes.
Okay, so all seventh graders?
All seventh graders and all ninth graders, in fact. When we were looking at the Positive Prevention Plus curriculum, we had teachers from Oakview as well, and Oak Park High School and Medea, no one from OPUS had wanted to, to look at it, but I actually already met with someone from OPUS to discuss it, so.
Okay, but the ninth grade is not, we're just talking seventh grade.
We're talking seventh.
Just for this, yeah, okay, but they looked at the, you were talking about the curriculum.
The curriculum, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because, yes.
And then, the other piece that I kept getting tripped up over is this idea that for those students who do not take a year-long, no, for those students who do take a year-long elective, they will be getting the, a 10-day push in California Healthy Youth Act, just the requisite piece in their year-long elective. And we don't, I want to make sure I understand, we don't need to approve that. That's not a course.
It'll actually be more than just the California Healthy Youth Act requirements. We have, I think, three of the, three of the days are going to be that. We've kind of mapped it out a little bit. We're trying to get at least one day on each of the required topics.
Okay, so but a shorter, like a condensed version that includes the sexual health and HIV prevention education? Okay. And then, the, I guess, we asked this, but I feel like it's helpful to just talk about publicly, the idea of why we wouldn't just push in. I think Mrs. O'Hagan, who's like the most fantastic science teacher on the planet, both my boys had your class and are all the better for it. But that, um, I just lost my train of thought. Yeah, thank you. I lost my train of thought when I was giving a compliment, sorry.
Well, so there's some challenges with that because when you're on a semester-long elective, like, let's say you had a rocketry, and I know that's eighth grade, but let's say you had a seventh-grade elective, say it's rocketry, and you do those students, then those students, second semester, are going to do something entirely different. They're going to do art, and some of them are going to do, I don't know, heroes and villains, or music appreciation. And so they're all going to split out. And so you're going to have different students each time, go into different classes. So that'd be very challenging. Plus, I don't think you would have the connection. I mean, ultimately, we really want our students to have this connection with the teacher, as many students as possible. So to me, I feel like that it's fragmented. I feel like it checks off the boxes and it meets the requirements of the law. But maybe there are students who would actually prefer to have that. And it sounds like, from our student requests, that a lot of them are looking for real-world, real-life opportunities to discuss problems that are relevant to them. And so for that group of students, this is an elective and an opportunity of something that they would have selected just even on their own. So I mean, there's pros and cons either way. I mean, if you look at the elective as being absolutely sacred and not wanting to touch the electives and just having those 10 days we push in, then, you know, you'd have to figure that out. I don't know that a teacher would find that to be terribly rewarding to spend their time just two weeks at a time with each group and never having their own class and students. But that's definitely, you know, when we look at this pilot, if it doesn't work, I mean, I guess that's another model. Plus, we also look at 10 days out of a semester class is a lot bigger impact than 10 days out of a year-long class. So definitely, teachers would need to modify, all the elective teachers would need to modify their curriculum to be able to do that. It's an option. It would be a little logistically kind of a nightmare, but potentially.
So, and so we're, so your concept is that it would be a pilot program? And, um, so I guess I've, I don't know if anyone else has any other questions. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I want to be very clear that I'm 100% supportive of a health class. I'm 100% supportive of the, our board policies, the California Healthy Youth Act, of making sure that all of our children have a comprehensive health education, all of our students. But the equity piece kind of bothers me, that some students get, for all of the reasons that Mrs. O'Hagan talked about, and some won't, even though I recognize how important music education and the other year-long semester classes are. You know, some kids are going to have less choice of electives, and some kids aren't going to have the, oh my goodness, aren't going to have the benefits of this wonderful health class that is really needed. So I just, that's my concern. I'm glad that you've explained that it's now going to be a pilot for that reason because I think we really do need to look at those issues. The other concern I had is that we've already asked students to select the electives they want to take for next year, the rising seventh graders. And they made that choice without knowing that, you know, depending on what they chose, will, you know, have a consequence of, you know, maybe not getting the health class or getting the health class. I don't know what, you know, what, either way.
We would still try and give them their first-choice elective, but honestly, they don't always get their first-choice elective. And electives can change based on staffing, too. So, you know, students don't just put down one elective choice. I think they put down multiple elective choices. And then, once they fill up, many times, students get second or third choices as well. But we will be communicating to the school sites and the parents, absolutely, so that they understand this is coming.
Okay.
And can I just, real quick, really good points, by the way. I really appreciate those points, President Healthstein. I have full faith and confidence in Mrs. Chance and Mrs. Gottlieb and Mr. Bariagian that it'll be a very clear communication to the parents that, you know, the school's come up with this new health class, and, you know, some of your students may, you know, here's another option. You know, they may, you know, be taking it, you know, depending on, you know, what their elective choices are and so on and so forth. So I'm really, feel good with that. I actually reached out to legal counsel today and had a long conversation with our legal counsel about any equity concerns. And those concerns have been alleviated after my conversation with legal counsel today. So what legal counsel told me was, because more students will benefit from having more health education, you know, a greater number of students are going to have a greater access, an opportunity to have more health education delivered to them, that they do not feel that's an equity issue, even students that would, so let's say students choose to take like a zero-period PE class or something like that at the school to offer it, which I know they're talking about, those students would actually have more benefits because they would not only take PE off of their regular schedule and take it zero-period, they would have access to a health class, which is more health education, right? The semester-long course and an additional elective, right? You know, those types of things. So I ran through all these different, same things you're doing. I read through all these different things with legal counsel. And I want to thank the board member that requested that, hey, we may talk to legal counsel because it really helped clear my mind because I had some of the same concerns, quite frankly. I love this idea. I love the fact we're doing this health class. But I always get nervous on those types of things that are being brought up now. And they really feel that because it's more health education for more kids than is currently being offered, they felt that that alleviated all those concerns. And they're actually having a benefit by doing it. This is what my conversation garnered today with legal counsel, just to sort of let everybody know.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and thank you, Trustee Hardy and Trustee Healthstein, for highlighting the fact that we had a special meeting. So there was a lot of good discussion and great conversation amongst our board members. I think just more around the logistics. I think conceptually, we all agree that this is going to be phenomenal. And just seeing the level of enthusiasm and support from the staff is just really, really inspiring. So we're really excited about that. I think it's just as anything else, when you have a large shift like this, it's always the logistics and the what-ifs and the, you know, unknown impacts or unintended consequences. But I think, you know, Trustee Hardy, you said it's like the chicken or the egg. You know, we have to move forward at this point. But I also want to be able to, you know, I think the idea that it's a pilot is very important. So we'll be able to work out any, and tweak anything going forward from what we learn. I think for me personally, the concern was, you know, if we move to offering a zero-period to accommodate this course, is obviously, you know, incongruity of lost sleep with mental health, right? I mean, I think the CDC just came out with a study on this. So, but I like the idea that it's optional for our families for whom maybe they do have early birds and that works. So, but I would like to just kind of make sure that we closely monitor the impacts of those particular students who are doing zero, it is middle school. And, you know, I find that developmental stage is, you know, that's a big shift. So, you know, and we have a lot of families also traveling in. So I would just ask that staff really kind of evaluate this at some point. So I don't know if we can craft a motion accordingly to kind of address some of these concerns and we can move on this.
So I took the liberty of doing that, of drafting something out because we were like kind of teasing out some of these things. So if, do you guys have any other questions or comments?
No, thank you.
So, well, we would move to approve the new seventh-grade health class for the 2324 school year with the following conditions. It'll be a one-year pilot aligned with California state standards and compliant with board policy 6142.8, which is comprehensive health education, and 6142.1 Sexual Health and HIV Prevention Instruction, and piloted by the properly-credentialed teacher assigned to teach it. I had written MCMS, but it sounds like it's MCMS and OPUS. Well, if they need to, I don't know because it's different. But MCMS, for sure, would send this communication to students and parents of rising seventh graders, explaining the school's planned change for the health education, for health education next year, and allowing them to revisit their elective choices, given the shift. And that staff will return to the Board of Education with the following. The Positive Prevention Plus, which is the proposed instructional material for the Sexual Health and HIV Prevention Education Unit for the course, they'll return to us to approve that before the end of this school year. And then, staff will also return next school year during the 2324 school year to address the rest of the units in the piloted health course, equity concerns that we've talked about tonight, and information on how we're delivering comprehensive health education in middle school, grade six through eight, to all of our students.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, thank you for indulging all of our questions and helping us really understand the benefits of this and what we're doing.
I just appreciate the board. I really do. I mean, the questions you asked are so spot-on. The concerns you have are so real. And, you know, we're going to do exactly what that motion says. Like I said, full faith and confidence in this team at Media Creek Middle School and in Mrs. Herzog, you know, going forward, and the OPUS staff, you know, going forward, Mr. Cromwell and his staff. And I know they will, and I know they're going to evaluate and monitor this. We talked about quarterly monitoring, seeing where we are based on those types of things, and seeing ways that we can, you know, mitigate, alleviate, you know, those types of things, and just keep making it better. And I think at the end of the day, that's the kind of stuff that keeps it going. And because of this, it'll get better and better. I really, really appreciate that. So thank you so much, Diamond. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Davis, and thank you, Tammy.
And then, just one final quick comment. And just to kind of close the loop from what we heard earlier today from our wellness counselors, is I hope that when this new health teacher does get hired and starts building the curriculum, especially, there seems to be some optionality on, you know, the non-state mandated standards. So many different avenues and great areas that this class can cover. But what I heard today from, you know, the Media Wellness Counselor was just to get, using some of that great data that they're gathering and helping, using that to help inform what our students, you know, what our counselors are observing and what our students could, you know, could use. And also, just asking them as well. So I hope that's, both of those are taken into account. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it'll help with overall connection to school, honestly. I think that that's really going to be important. So, good point. All right, thank you. So the next thing I have here, so, okay.
One through two and three and four at Media Creek Middle School.
All right, so we're currently providing ELD support through pull-out instruction with instructional assistance at both Media Creek and at Oak Park High School. But we would like to change the format so that we can provide students with access to a credentialed teacher to teach the actual designated ELD. This will be discussed with parents at the multilingual learners, the D-LAC meeting, when we meet in April. We also met with them back in December as well to have some preliminary discussions. Parents can opt out of the designated ELD for their students. But it is very important, it is an important class, as it is where students are taught skills specific to assist them with acquiring English. This will hopefully help speed up their English language acquisition so they can better access grade-level curriculum. So this is a class that we'd like to add. We'd actually like to add a Level 1 and 2 and a Level 3 and 4. The students are not grouped together by grade level. They're grouped together by their language acquisition level because the class needs to be focused on their particular skills that they need additional support with. So we have a Level 1, Level 1 and 2 beginning class at both Media and Oak Park that we're proposing tonight, and a Level 3 and 4 class at both Media and Oak Park High School.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if we could expand to take these two together. It's the same, right, for the high schools, 6.2 and 6.3? The English language, it's the same explanation, just a different level?
Just a different level, yeah.
Curriculum?
Yes.
Is that okay with all of you? Okay, so 6.2, we're on to 6.2 and 6.3. And then, the only question I had about this was how we've incorporated D-LAC, the input, or will we, into this? And whether or not, just, I know it says it in our board policy, but if you could just say that there is an exemption to this class, right?
Yes, we actually have a form that's included as an exhibit with our AR 6147, I believe. And we have the EL master plan that Sean has been finalizing as well. We actually, this year, already met with a parent that wanted to opt their student out of ELD, and we gave them the form and we explained, you know, the process. And so this is something that we've already been doing. It's not anything new. And so parents do have that option. We are having a meeting with D-LAC again in April, and this will be one of the items on the agenda as well, just letting parents know about this.
And then, just logistically, let me just make sure I understand it. I think I understand it for the middle school, and then if you could tell us what it is for the high school. So these multilingual learners, one, they'll have the option to opt out. But to allow them to take an elective and, because this is now going to be, if they do take this course, it, they wouldn't be able to take an elective, is that correct?
Yes, so we're planning to add a zero-period PE, which will allow students, not just multilingual learner students in this ELD class, but also students that have not had an opportunity to have an elective in the past, are students with disabilities that are in directed studies classes, to allow them the option to have an ELD, to have an elective class as well. So we will give priority for that zero-period PE class to those students so that they can have an elective and do ELD. If they choose not to do that, that's fine. If they choose not to do ELD, that's okay as well. You know, we would advise against that because I think it's going to ultimately hinder their progress in inquiring English, and especially at middle school. You really want to leave middle school proficient and ready to access that core curriculum when you get to high school, or else you're going to really struggle. But again, it's a personal choice.
Okay, and will the, is it similar for the high school?
So for high school, students would, it would be in a place of one of their electives. The high school already offers a seventh period, you know, that students have access to, so it's not quite as much of a big deal. They have a little bit more flexibility within their schedule, but it would be the same thing.
And then, assuming the board does approve this, then what's kind of the process for speaking with these students and these families and kind of explaining that so that they understand all their options?
We will create communication that will go out to them, probably via Parent Square, would be my thought. Of course, first, we're going to talk to the parents at D-LAC, but not everybody comes to D-LAC. We can try, and we do all kinds of fancy things and offer donuts and whatever, but it's still difficult to get parents to come. So we need to have another avenue besides just D-LAC. So Parent Square, for sure. Communications from the school sites themselves.
And maybe, I mean, because it's a small population relatively, right? A couple, so maybe counselor meetings. I just think that, you know, even for me, it just took a little bit to kind of really understand how this is working. And there's kind of two options, it seems like, right? And just explaining the pros and cons, and then allowing them to make an informed decision.
Yep, we can definitely do that, yeah.
So is there a motion for both of these?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item 6.4, approve new course theater performance and production at Oak Park High School.
So this is pretty simple. We'd like to move the class that's typically been after school. We now have a CTE-credentialed teacher, and we'd like to move her into the school day and have her teach a theater class. We have a lot of students asking for it, so it'd be exciting to have that.
So moved. Okay, sorry. Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on to 6.5, approve a new course, Science for Education at Oakview High School.
So our students at Oakview are at the school. So, our students at Oakview are at the school because they're looking for an alternative education, and this is something that we feel is going to be very beneficial to them. We're starting an education pathway for students who might be interested in being preschool teachers, or teachers, or teacher's assistants, or some type of a career within education. And so, one of the courses that we'd like to add, actually, these next two courses fit in with that pathway. They do not, because they have issues with credit recovery, have enough space in their schedule to add a bunch of additional electives. So we're going to teach these classes through their science and language arts classes, so they'll have a focus on these career, or this particular career technical industry sector of education. So, we would like to approve these new courses, we're excited, we have two Oakview teachers who went out and got their CTE credentials, I won't go into detail about that, but that's very exciting for us, because we can claim them for our grants and our matches, and they're also bringing something fantastic for our students here at Oakview. So, those are those next two classes.
Okay, so we're taking 6.5 and 6.6 together. Does anyone have any questions?
So, just, so it's not actually a new course, but it's basically combined English and science with a CTE focus?
It's changing the focus of the course, the content, kind of like our, some of our high school English classes.
Yes, the seminars?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, okay, got it, thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We're on to 6.7, approve new materials request, English for senior seminar at Oak Park High School.
So, this is our last request here, it is for the use of The Lightning Thief. It's a book that the teacher who's teaching the mythology class up at Oak Park High School would like to use, is just one of his novels, he also does Frankenstein and two or three others, but he would also like to add this to the group of novels that he's currently teaching.
I'll move, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on to item seven, business services, delegate, 7.1, delegate authority to the superintendent to award architectural services contract for the relocation of four portable classrooms at Media Creek Middle School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This falls under, falls under the Measure S project for the Media Creek Sea Container Classroom Project, so this isn't in terms of asking for a project, but in terms of trying to, in the process of closing out that project, we know that that project was submitted under modernization funds, and modernization fund says, hey, you're putting in X number of classrooms, you need to remove X number of classrooms in order to receive your matching funds or your approved allotment for funds. Media Creek is slated to get somewhere an amount of $3.5 million if we ever see the matching funds through the modernization application. That will require a state passing another bond for construction projects. So, we need to, we have put the classrooms down, and we have identified five portables there that need to come out. One came out last summer because it was not DSA-approved at all, and would have required a lot of money to make DSA, so we just got rid of it. And there's still four portables to be removed. We have identified four locations for those portables, but in order to place those portables on other sites, just as we faced, which came to you last board meeting, in order to create the portables, or, you know, put down the TK portables at Oak Hills, in order to place portables anywhere, you need site plans. In order to get site plans, you have to have architectural services, and so this is what we're coming to you for, is to give, just like we did with the Oak Hills, to give Dr. Davis the authority to award those contracts once we go through the RFP process, which we're currently in, for the sake of time to try to get this to be a summer project. Any questions about this? Okay.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? I'll second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. On to item 7.2, approve certification of the 22-23 second interim financial report and budget revision presentation.
I'm not going to take offense that everybody has, half our people in the crowd have left right before the second interim, and this might be TMI, but I scheduled a doctor's appointment today for my TMJ, and I'm not sure if you've ever had TMJ, it really is painful to open your jaw. So for the sake of the pain in my jaw and the time, as well as the potential of tornadoes, I'll try to be as fast as possible tonight. But before I start, I'm going to have to thank Mr. Byron Jones, of course, this is our eighth interim report together, believe it or not, time flies when you're having fun, if you can believe that. Four years, Mr. Jones, it's, I wouldn't do with any other, wouldn't want to do with anybody else other than Byron, he's getting super good at this, he was done with this report, believe it or not, a couple weeks ago, maybe even a little bit more, so we're going to have some fun. Here we go. So, second interim report, this is by ed code that we're doing this, we came to you for first interim, which is your expenditures from July 1 through October 31st, and then projections through October 31st, our actuals to October 31st, and then projections through July, June 30th. Now, this is the second interim, which is your actuals from July 1 through January 31st, and projections from February 1 through June 30th. And we have to show not just in our current year that we can meet our financial obligations, and also in our two out-years. And at the end of this, we'll either have a positive certification, a qualified or negative. A positive says that we will meet our financial obligations, qualifies is that we may meet our financial obligations, and a negative is that we will not meet our financial obligations. Moving on, the last, I came up here and spoke to you was after the governor's January budget reveal, which at that point, we received some new assumptions from our governor that impacted how we would go about, some assumptions changes of what, that would impact our second interim report. So we're here now to discuss those impacts on our budget and our projections. And then, after this, we'll move, we'll sort of change gears and start prepping for our adopted budget for 23-24, and the next big sort of assumptions change will be the May revise from the governor, and that, at that point, we'll shift our assumptions, and which will help us adopt or create the adopted budget. Moving on, normally I present to you, you know, this is combined revenue, I, in the past have broken it out, because a combined revenue is made up of both unrestricted and restricted revenue. Tonight, because there's not a whole lot of changes, I'm going to just speak in terms of combined, and we can discuss within those what is unrestricted or restricted along the way. And so, in this one here, we see a big, the one big adjustment is $882,000 in other state revenue, and that became as a result of that the governor's January reveal, he proposed a reduction of approximately 35% in the arts, music, and discretionary block grant, so this would be restricted dollars. And, and so, we're already planning for that, as if, you know, until he says otherwise, we've made that adjustment in our budget of the revenue. Other local revenue comes in both unrestricted and restricted, the main here, we see an increase, and that's mainly due to, as the year goes on, we do not project, you know, fees or donations that are collected throughout the year from parent organizations, you know, so we expect those, we budget those as actuals, we expect that to increase throughout the year. That's it for our changes in revenue. I've done the same with our expenditures along the way. Mainly, we've seen, so, the first part, if we look at our 1,000s, which is our certificated, remember, whenever we talk salary, we talk ones, twos, and threes, ones being certificated, twos being classified, threes being our benefits. We've seen some savings in our 1,000, our certificated salaries, as a result of mid-year retirements, with the mid-year retirement, you have, in this sort of situation, you have a much higher salary, reduced by a lower salary coming in, so we reap some benefits from that. And then, we also had some teachers who are on extended leave, and when they're on extended leave without sick time, you know, there is, believe it or not, we do see a savings from that. And so, that is accounted for about $140,000 in savings on the certificated side. On the classified side, we've seen a savings from our vacancies, we do not, with our, when we have a vacancy, it projects it whole for the year, so if you start the year with a vacancy, it's projecting it for all, you know, if it's a 10-month employee, it's projecting it for, as if they're there the whole 10 months, and as every month, it's, they're not there, you see a savings fall off from payroll. And so, we've seen about $196,000 in vacancies on our classified. And normally, we don't project savings from vacancies, but in this situation, we did, with special education, we projected future savings for the rest of the year on some special education vacancies, because we didn't want to be double-whammied, which you'll see in our contracts later on, an increase as a result of, since we can't fill those vacancies as district positions, we're using agencies, outside agencies to perform those services. And as a result, that's increasing our contracts, so we didn't want to have both the vacancies in there, as if they're going to be there the whole year, as well as the contracts, so we figured we'd reduce, reduce the salaries down to help offset that a little bit, knowing that are contracts. Anytime you do contracted services, it's going to be more money. Right now, based on second interim for salaries and benefits for our unrestricted side of the house, we're 88.98%, that's normal than where we usually are, right around the 92%, but also take into consideration, this doesn't, any salary increases that come as a result of collective bargaining would obviously impact that, because that would account for expenditures this year, so that number, we could imagine would increase. Moving on, for, this is where I kind of alluded to this, services and operating expenditures, this is your 5,000, so when I'm talking 5,000, it's an object code that we use in our account code system. So the 5,000, we're seeing an increase in our property and liability insurance, that actually, believe it or not, that's something, normally they give us prior to the start of the year, but they voted, as a result, remember, prior to this year, when we adopted our budget, there wasn't the augmentation from the COLA, the additional augmentation, and so we saw increased revenue after we adopted our budget, and at that point, our JPA, I think, you know, they all decided to vote on, saying, hey, with this increased revenue, you can pay, you know, pad the coffers a little bit more, if I'm explaining this right, Byron, you know, you can pad this a little bit more, and so they all voted to do the higher percentage for liability this go, which resulted in a $113,000 increase in our liability insurance. We've talked-
Adam?
Yeah.
When you say increase, does that mean that the premium increases as a result of higher coverage, or is it just a premium increase?
I want to say it's just a higher premium increase to help, I think it's essentially, and it might be for the deduct, reduce the deductible later on.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah. And then, we know with our utilities, we saw an increase from our power bill with Edison, which we've been talking about here, that we, you know, we had planned for it to be lower, they've hit us with an additional $100,000 bill that was unbeknownst to us, we've been working on having them audit our solar, but nonetheless, right now, we've seen an increase of $100,000, as well as we saw an increase in our gas bills, and so that we've seen $140,000 in utilities. And then, the last is our contracts, which I alluded to, the $455,000 in contracts for special education services, to provide services for students, one-on-one aides, and additional IA support there. Any questions? All of this, where you see the savings as, you know, the increases, as well as the savings, the total expenditures for combined is an increase of $65,000 in expenditures from where we were first interim. So how does that impact the bottom line? This one is broken out by unrestricted, restricted, and combined, because whenever we're talking about, when it says, can you meet your financial obligations in your current year and three out, it's now, this one's very specific about your ending fund balance, what is that comprised of? So looking at your ending fund balance on the unrestricted versus restricted, because your fiscal health is really in the unrestricted ending fund balance, so we break it out a little bit. So, we talk about our revenue coming in versus our expenditures, and at this point, at second interim, we're showing, we have after-revenue versus expenditures, a $2,207,000 increase to our ending fund balance, so we have our beginning fund balance of $2.4 million, you add $2.2 million to that, and you get $4.6 million as our new ending fund balance. So now that you have an ending fund balance, what is that comprised of, right? And so, we then assign things from our ending fund balance, and so, you can see on the second interim column of 22-23 unrestricted, how did we assign that $4.6 million? We set aside $2.4 million as part of negotiations and setting aside for potential salary increases. We also set aside $1.657 million, that's the additional percentage needed to have our 6% reserve policy, because Fund 17 houses our, part of our, the majority of our 3% reserve, which is that $1.688 million that you see there. So, the difference, if you take that plus the 1657820, that assignment equals 6%. And then, we also assign $492,000 for future capital improvement projects. All aside, that gives you, if you take Fund 17, plus the additional funds to meet the 6% reserve policy, the total reserve for economic uncertainty is at 6%. Does that make sense? Because that's a sense, because it's a little bit different than what we have done in the past, of how we've, we have, not to say we haven't assigned in the past, before, without, we've, in the past, we've had unfunded liability assignments, carryover supplemental dollars in the past, if we've assigned, which is something that we would, when we close our books, there'll be additional assignments for any leftover lottery funds we'll assign at the end of the year. So essentially, assigning is a way of making sure they don't lose identity, or that they have a specific purpose on the unrestricted side of the house for future use. Does that make sense? Okay, so that takes care of for our current year, but as I spoke before, it's not about the current year, it's also about your out-years, your two out-years as well, so we do use a multi-year projection for that, and with our multi-year projection, we have assumptions. And these assumptions are based on the governor's January budget, which I spoke about earlier. At that time, anytime, you know, when, at the May revise, we'll go to that, and school services will create a new DART board, that DART board becomes, everybody uses that to, uses their, you know, all the assumptions for their upcoming budget, or for their numbers. And so, here are, this is from essentially the school services budgets, and how it's DART board, and how it impacts our budget in the current and two out-years. Moving to the next one, I created a slide here to show some of those assumptions, what kind of has changed since first interim, and those impacts, how can we expect to see those impacts on our revenue, knowing that first year's all the same, that's why if you look at the first column, 22-23, everything going down, there is no increase or decrease in LCFF revenue, and therefore, it's $0 increase at the end, versus these assumptions for ours really impact the two out-years, year two and year three. And so, right off the bat, the biggest thing that you're going to see, two things, is one, in the first column, is the governor has projected the, now an 8.13 increase in our COLA in the out-year, in the year two, but a slight decrease in COLA in year three. So from 5.38 to 8.13 is a 2.7 increase in revenue, is what we can expect, but we know we're not funded in percentages, we're funded in actual dollars, and there's other things that come into play other than a COLA for our revenue. And being that, we look at our ADA, our average of daily attendance, which is the main factor for that, along with your base grant, how much does each ADA earn, which is what the COLA impacts, is that grant that each ADA earns. And so, your ADA is your enrollment with an attendance percentage applied to it. And you can see historically, for the last 15 years, our historical attendance rate has been 96.66, and that was what we had at first- And that was what we had at first interim. Our P1 ADA, which comes out after first interim, and even since that P1, we're seeing some, as you can, as you normally can from P1, P2 historically, you drop even further with your attendance percentage. You can always expect that. So we are projecting an even further decrease at this point from our P1 attendance rate to now, which is now at 94.7. 94.7, that's a, you know, roughly a 2% decrease in attendance. And while that might not seem like a lot, it does have an impact on your revenue. Not in current year, in your out years. Because remember, right now, our current year, we're funded on our prior three years ADA. And that is a change from the, from the past. In the past, it was your current ADA or your prior year ADA, whichever one's higher. And that's where it gives people, districts a opportunity, if, if a current year is lower than the prior year, that you can sort of weather the storm for a year. But because of COVID and the big drop, the governor for this year allowed it to be, instead of the current year, prior single year, it's now the combined three years for the prior. So knowing that this current year's drop in ADA is now going to be applied to the two, this, this current year plus the prior two years. All right? So that 2% equals about 80, 80 ADA in the current year, but equates in a three-year rolling average to a reduction of 27.688. Does that make sense? In current year only, it's a decrease of 80. But in a three-year rolling average, it reduces the three-year rolling average by 27.6. And that 27.6 equates to $320,000 in 80, less funding next year as a result of that new attendance factor. And so now then you could say, hey, next year, if we have that same 94.7, which we're now projecting out, okay? Because that's seem, that's the new normal for us in a projection, until we're proven otherwise. So next year, now after two years of the lower ADA into the two of the three years average, that equates to a 55.22 decrease in ADA in a three-year average, and a $664,000 reduction in ADA. So over two years, it's about $1 million in decreased revenue that we can expect from a reduction of 2% in your attendance factor. So it does have a, a major impact. So when you look at, knowing that our enrollment doesn't change for next year, so this is a situation where all of your, all of your assumptions are changing, except for your ADA for it, how does that impact? So normally, if I would have said, hey, the governor's given us a 2.7 increase in, in COLA next year, if all, if everything else was the same assumption, it would just be a straight 2.7 increase in revenue. Well, because of this reduction of $320,000 next year, you can see that that increase is now to a $939,000 increase from what we had at first interim, and a 1.97 increase in revenue. So that, that drop equates to about a, you know, 0.8% of a decrease in revenue from what we believe, what we would have had if we had the full COLA. Does that make sense?
Adam, just really quick, so what you're saying is, so our P1 from this past fall, and our P2 from this spring, that affects next year's-
Correct.
Every year, it affects the next year's-
Yeah, because we're funded on current year or prior three. So we're already set. Our current funding, only if by some, only way for our LCFF revenue to change this year is if it come October, we were way off on our enrollment projections. We saw a drastic increase in enrollment, where our current year was higher than the three-year average, which is not going to happen, because remember, two of the three years of this year is 2019, '20 are hold harmless. And that's why we're going to see an even steeper drop, because two of our three years are made up of this higher enrollment from 2019, '20, which is part of the reason why he created the three-year rolling average to begin with, was to, to keep that cliff from impacting us. So how does this play out in a multi-year projection? And essentially, looking at, at the bottom line, I really don't like the way it looks with the 6% going all the way across. But nonetheless, it says 666 down there, because at the end, we can meet our financial obligations in the current and out years. And we are, you can see, you can see that assignment. You can imagine, you see the assignment down there for each year. The first year, it's that $4 million. Well, you saw what that $4 million was comprised of, is that additional to meet the, the 6% reserve policy, the future capital projects, as well as the set aside for, for, for raises. And next year, you can see it grow to 755, because whatever we set aside for salary increases this year, has to roll over into next year. We add into that. And then you can see that grow to $10 million in the following years, because it's $2.4 million in current year, $3 million next year, in year two. So that three plus the 2.4 is 5.4, plus another three, is $8.4 million in here set aside for salary increases.
Adam, can I, I know you're going to roll, but can I roll back to the attendance stuff again?
Yeah.
I just want people to know, anybody listening, I know a lot of people watch this later, whatever. This P1, P2 attendance, this is something that has affected the entire state. Our lobbyist, one of the last communications I got from our lobbyist, was that this is a big problem in the state. And so some legislators in the state are proposing different legislations and things like that, looking at resetting the averages and looking at all this stuff, because pretty much every district in the state of California, this school year has, their P1 dropped, and their P2, like Adam said, is typically always lower than your P1. So it's, this is not just an Oak Park issue, this is a state of California issue. And it really is something that, working with our legislators and things like that, we need to get to the governor, that this is a problem for school districts. This is really a problem.
Well, last year, last year, the governor did provide a hold harmless in your attendance percentage. But the problem for us was, we actually increased our attendance percentage, believe it or not. We were 9.7 last year versus our historical average of 9.66. So we didn't get to take advantage of that hold harmless attendance percentage. And, you know, there's hope that they would do that for this year, but that hasn't been approved yet. So therefore, this, our assumptions, stay our assumptions until we're told otherwise.
Yeah, and I just want to say one more thing about this, is that we really appreciated the governor doing that, the legislature approving that, and so on and so forth. But it is now showing statewide, that's a little short-sighted, that, that it wouldn't just be for one year, that this is residue left over from the pandemic. These are habits that are, we have to break, you know, with our students, our families, all that stuff. They've got to remember that they need to be here, and then they'll learn here, and they'll thrive here. And that's really, really important. And that's something that we, me as superintendent and my team, are going to have to really push the end of the summer, the beginning of the school year, about students being in class. Because, you know, teachers, like Mr. Peters is here, I mean, he can tell you, the kids that are in class, their opportunity to succeed is much greater than any student that's not in class. I know it's common sense, but sometimes people realize that, oh, I'll just take my kid out of school for a few days. Oh, just, well, you know, those days, they accumulate. And the next thing you know, instead of a student only having three days of absence, which is, you know, whatever, they have 13. And that's two and a half weeks. That's a problem. And, and that's the kind of stuff that we're seeing. And when you get to 18, it's a chronic absentee in the state of California. So I just wanted to put that out there, that parents, you're awesome. Keep being awesome, be more awesome, and make sure your kids are in school, unless they're really, really sick. Okay? Thank you.
And I have a question. So even, even legitimate, you know, absences from school due to illness, non-doctor excuse illnesses factors in, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, any, any, any absence, when a student doesn't show up, you know, at all, regardless of excused or unexcused, it's an absence.
It's an absence. Okay. So I know this is kind of getting ahead, but, because at the end, well, you know, we always ask about future board agenda items. I think it'd be really good for us to have a better understanding of what's driving, what really is driving the lower attendance, because we also did get hit with a terrible flu season this winter, as well as RSV, and a bunch of other illnesses. And I also think that families are just more careful about sending their kids to school sick because of lingering, you know, I don't know, habits, but trauma even from, from COVID, and not wanting to expose everyone else to that. So some of it is, I think, parents being diligent and being considerate of other families. But I, I just don't feel like we have a great sense for what is really driving. Is it really, you know, and I also do get a sense, just anecdotally, that, you know, people are traveling now and didn't get to travel for many, many years. And so now they're a little bit more, you know, willing to pull their kids out. And so there's, there might be a little bit more of that. But I just don't feel like we have the data to really understand that. So I think, I think we can hope that the governor and the legislature will listen to all the school districts and boards that are saying, we really need relief from this, you know, the entire state is suffering from that. But, but in the absence of that, I think we need to have a plan for next year to get those attendance numbers back up, in, in case we don't get that relief. Because, as you said, the three-year rolling average goes away, correct? So we do have the opportunity-
The three-year average is here, but we can, especially, we can expect one more big year of a drop, because when 2019, '20 hold harmless comes completely out of the three-year average. And then at that point, it'll sort of level out a little bit. You know, it won't be such a big hit, even though we do project a continuous decline in our enrollment moving forward. But albeit the three-year, we'll, we'll, we'll sort of mow that out.
Okay. And then, and also just, you know, I remember four or five years ago, being at Brookside when my kids were really young, and there was a big push for incentive drives for attendance. And I think it would be maybe worth revisiting those programs again. But I think we just need to understand what's really driving the attendance. And also, you know, maybe some education around, I mean, $1 million, wow, over two years, that's, that's, that's a huge part of our budget, actually. Not huge, but it's significant for our budget. So, so, you know, some, some education. I just don't want to wait too long, I think, to, and assume that these numbers will continue to drop. I think we really need to be proactive in trying to raise those attendance numbers.
Absolutely, and this is ongoing dialogue that we've had in our leadership meetings with, with principals. Okay. So based on this, we can meet our financial, if you look at the 3% in current, remember, it's the 3% that you look at, can you meet your financial obligations in your current year, plus your two out years? It'd be based on seeing threes down at the bottom, but nonetheless, you see sixes. We, we have other funds beyond, all this fund, NYPD is in Fund 01, Fund 1. We have two other, well, three funds that we, four funds that we really utilize. Fund 17, which houses our 3% reserve, Fund 21, which is Measure S, Fund 13, which is our nutrition services program, cafeteria fund, and Fund 12, which is our Club Oak Park. Obviously, in the past, Fund 12 and 13 have required a transfer out in order to be whole, that meaning that they weren't, when you took their revenue minus their expenditures, their expenditures exceeded their revenue. And so therefore, needed a transfer out from Fund 01 to be whole. So we obviously, something we want to monitor and take a look at. Ms. Roganey. And so, right now, based on last year, we had a situation where we're surprised at the end of the year with Club Oak Park requiring a transfer out. We've instituted some new things this year, where we monitor them every month. Byron sits with Sarah all to sort of go over something similar to our cash flow report, where we're making, you know, it started the year as full projections, and at the end of every month, we reconcile their revenue projections versus their expenditures. And so we're currently projecting a net increase to fund balance for Fund 12 by $98,000. I mean, to be an increase of $98,000, so they would be seen as profitable. And then for our child nutrition fund, the same there. In the past, they've, they've required a transfer out. Last year, with the moment that they had the universal meals for all, we've now seen a, a program that has required a transfer out to be profitable. This current year, they're looking to have a net increase of $74,000, and bringing their ending fund balance to $866,000. You can only carry six months' worth of expenditures in, as part of their, as part of the nutrition, as part of the guidelines from the state, you can't carry more than six months as a reserve. We do have plans, you have to have a, a sort of a spend-down plan. And currently, one of the spend-down plans, and even though we started charging some of, last year, we approved in June, a $400,000 kitchen equipment upgrade to be paid for out of Measure S. At, to this point, I believe about $300,000 has been purchased from Measure S, as well as about $200,000, I think, in nutrition services, that we would transfer all of those expenditures by the end of, by year end, as part of closing the books. So you would see an increase of about $300,000 to that ending fund balance. And it would make sure that Measure S is, would be in many ways like that. Measure S project didn't exist. Any questions about these two funds? And then also, we'd look at the net increase to, if this holds true for the club, we'd be looking at that ending fund balance to potentially transfer to the general fund because of the number, you know, we've, we have transferred in the fact, in the past as a form of due-to, due-from, which is really a, a line of credit, a loan, that we would do a due-to, due-from back to the general fund from Measure S to repay that loan.
I had a question on the, the Club Oak Park that, I can't remember, was there any money owed from that initial investment?
I, I believe so, Byron. I think it's, I think it was $80,000 that was owed from the club, from the original investment.
So that could go back.
$20,000, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the, the question about the, the ending fund balance and the nutrition services. So if you, I don't know what six months is, but, but are you, or how are we looking at, at doing that? Are there some different-
We would be within that six-month balance right there. And if you can see that, you know, they have, from last year, we have, because they have been staffed better than they were last year. So you can look at that net difference between revenue, because right now, we're currently showing a $744,000 difference between the two. And that's closer to where they should be. But we also need to take into consideration some of the larger purchases. So right now, if I-
It's okay to have this.
It's okay to have this. You don't have to be net zero. You can, like I said, you, you have to be no more, your ending fund balance can be no more than six months' expenditures. And then we just need to be aware of, if they are more than that, how we spending that now.
Okay.
Okay. So these two funds look good thus far, not going to impact the general fund. And then that takes us to the end. Based on the things we spoke about earlier, I'm saying, I'm recommending a positive certification of the second interim, because we can meet our financial obligations in the current and the two out years. Any questions?
No, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Byron.
Yeah, I was going to say, as usual, thank you for a very clear presentation, and hope you feel better.
Oh, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
So we're on to item eight, open discussion, future agenda items, 8.1, special closed session meeting to review the superintendent's goals. Wait, I, I thought we were, well- So maybe we- Can we talk about both of these items together, 8.1 and 8.2?
Sure.
Yeah? Okay. So we're talking about future agenda items as well. So, can you refresh my memory? Do we need to do this, there's no contractual obligation? It's just, why, why were we doing that before? Do you want to? I have the, yeah, maybe we- I have the, um, yeah, maybe we, you, would you, do you want to give them a little background about what we did?
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Is it getting it done?
I'm sorry, I should have pulled it.
Yeah, so, so just, just to update um, the, the rest of the board on um, the work Denise and I have been doing as part of the subcommittee on the evaluation and the goal setting process. So we, we had a, a very productive conference call with Jeff and Roganey and um, Terrell and um, Sandy, Sandy from F3. They, they are, they are, if you recall, our consultants that, that we've used in the past to, to help with our kind of goal writing and evaluation drafting work. And we sort of came up with a proposed new timeline. That's, that's different from what we've done in the past, but we think will, um, is, is more in line with the CSBA's um, recommendations on, on, on how to do this. And, you know, um, that aligns with also just the district's goal setting and the LCAP process. So um, we had discussed uh, doing a couple of, um, well, a special meeting to go over the superintendent's mid-year kind of review of, of, of the goals, which I think is just um, more of a contractual obligation. But then sometime in April, having a special board meeting with just the board to set the board's strategic priorities, which is sort of something we haven't really done in the past. So not, you know, just the what and the why, but, but so that this is um, leading, then this leads into and give staff, uh, staff more guidance as we go into our retreat in June to um, you know, establish our, our district goals as well as, you know, getting into the LCAP really. And then, you know, and then in May, we would do a, kind of our usual year-end review of the district goals for this year. How did we do compared to our goals? As well as, you know, superintendent evaluation like we normally do. And then in, I think we talked about in late June, doing a board meeting to do sort of our annual goal setting for the following year, which is moving it up by a month or two from what we've done in the past. Because before, what would happen is we would already be started in the school year and we'd be into the school setting process, which seemed a little backwards because, you know, by then, you know, school year's has started. So, um, so we'll, we'll share this with the rest of the board. We hope that this is going to help do a lot of that pre-work so that those goal-setting sessions are not as, you know, they're more productive and more streamlined. So that's what, I mean, that's just kind of background. I don't want to go through all the dates, but I'm happy to share. And maybe Roganey, you can share this, right? And then, but, but one of the earlier dates was sort of having, because there's so much going on in the next few meetings. And we have that special meeting that we'd like to do just for the board to do kind of that strategic priority setting, is to have a special meeting just to do the, the mid-year review for the superintendent evaluation. But we just couldn't find a date, I think, at the end of March, that was just leading into spring break. So now Roganey, to kind of go back to, um, so I think Jeff, you were going to do kind of a selfie bell, correct? And then, um, and then I think we were going to try and do a special meeting, right? For next week, but I think we're just going to have to move it up. So you're trying to find a date for this week?
March 23rd is, is the date that Roganey was proposing. But that's just two days away and I don't know if, if you're, this week?
Yeah.
Because next week, you're, you're out on Wednesday, right?
Yeah, but.
No, I don't think so.
I think we could, we could do it on the 10th.
We could do it on the 10th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's, so for 8.1, we're not going to do a special closed session. I know. Well, we, we, we were drafting this at like nine in the morning, not after a five-hour board meeting, so.
And then wait, can I ask, for the 10th, is that a date we had before?
No.
Okay. Okay.
We were wondering if everybody might be available for a special board meeting on April 10. Our regular board meeting that month is the 25th. And the meeting for the 10th would, well, now it would be a, a closed session to talk to Dr. Davis about uh, his mid-year goal update. And then it would be a chance for us to meet alone, uh, you know, no, just the board.
Yeah, it's a Monday.
It's Monday of preach.
Yeah.
Is there a better date that, that week then?
I think we only picked that because of the question after you sent it in.
Did you think of a time of day?
Well, I just assumed it was the evening because of.
I'm thinking the whole week off. Daughter and family will be down.
Of the 10?
Yeah, the whole week is over.
Okay, so no good that week then?
No, no, for the evening, it gives me sleep.
On work, okay. Okay, so maybe Roganey, you could, we can look at that week when, um, in an email. It sounds like there's two people not know, right, tonight?
I can probably do it, but I'd love to just confirm.
So I've sent out the date and the time, and if that doesn't work, then we can look at another time.
And also, I think we better, before we send the date to the board, confirm with Terrell. And because I think they weren't clear about that either, so.
I think it would be helpful for us to get that feedback um, for that session.
Yeah.
Or that week. Yeah.
Yeah, whatever.
Okay, is that a, all right, so we've earned out, I had targeted nine, but it's 10. So it's better than 11, and not quite as good as nine.
Can I just ask for?
You did. Okay, I had, I had predicted, I was being very ambitious at the start of this meeting. I, I had said, maybe we can, no.
And then, and it doesn't necessarily have to be um, a full presentation to the board. But before we uh, break for the school year, whether April or May, and maybe through Friday notes, I think it would be great for us to get updates on the planning for the new, two new classes for transitional kindergarten. We just haven't heard about that. I felt like we were talking about that every, having a special meeting about that every couple of weeks. And, and then we just haven't heard in a while. And I know there's still some decisions to be made and people to be hired. And so if we could just get, you know, updates as they happen. And then particularly, at the, right at the end of the school year, kind of, you know, how that's, how that's shaking out, including with enrollment projections, just because there, there are two new classes out routing. That'd be great.
No, that's a really good point. Uh, Mr. McGugan and I sat for about an hour today looking at numbers and enrollment and things like that, talking to Mr. Warren, Ed O'Hills, look at that and all that.
All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, is that the case? Aye. Great, we're adjourned at 10:01.